2013 Meeting of the Edina Planning Commission. My name is Kevin Staunton. I'm the Chair of the Commission. Jackie, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Commissioner's Chair.
Here.
Commissioner Platter.
Here.
Commissioner Kildare.
Here.
Commissioner Tarkowski.
Here.
Commissioner Carr.
Here.
Now Commissioner Platter.
Still here.
Commissioner Swaller.
Here.
The Chair's side.
Present, thank you.
Always here.
Now you know how I feel.
Sure.
I'm also here.
Yes, Commissioner Carpenter. Commissioner Carpenter is here as well. Too many of us, clearly. Next up on the agenda is the approval of the meeting agenda. Are there any corrections, additions, subtractions for the meeting agenda this evening? Seeing none, I would take a motion to approve the meeting agenda. In a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. The agenda is approved. Next up is the consent agenda. I have been informed by staff that we will need to continue the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of the Edina Planning Commission of May 8th. So there is really nothing on the consent agenda other than that. So we will skip the consent agenda item and move to community comment. This is an opportunity for member or for people in the community who are attending this evening to come up and share thoughts with us on items that are not on the agenda. I would note that we have a very full audience tonight, and I'm not entirely sure for the reason for it, but I notice a bunch of students in the back. And by my calculation, this is the last planning commission meeting before the end of the school year, and I think that that might have something to do with the attendance. And I thought maybe one of the representatives, Micah, I think you were designated by your colleagues to come up and tell us a little bit about why you're here this evening. And this will be proof, this is recorded, and so your instructor will see that you're getting extra credit for actually speaking at the meeting. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Micah Horns. I'm a freshman at Valley View, and we have a government end-of-the-year project. We have to do a current event, so we have to attend a meeting and take notes and then write a paper on it, so.
Very good. Well, thank you for being here, and Micah, thank you for speaking for your colleagues tonight. Any other comments on community comment? All right, seeing none, I'd take a motion to close community comment. In a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Community comment is closed. Next up are public hearings. The first of the public hearings is a variance by the University of St. Thomas Crown Bank JMS Companies for 6443 McCauley Terrace in Edina. And Chris is going to introduce this for us. Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission. This project is a 99.2-foot front yard setback variance to build a home on a vacant lot located at 6443 McCauley Terrace for the University of St. Thomas, Crown Bank, and JMS. The subject property is highlighted. It fronts McCauley Terrace and backs up to Arrowhead Lake. This is an aerial photograph of the area and one that also outlines the vacant lot that backs up to Arrowhead Lake, also has frontage along McCauley Terrace. What you'll notice is that the home that's adjacent to the subject property to the south is, it's a neck lot, and it is located 152 feet back from McCauley Terrace right-of-way. This property dictates the front yard setback of the vacant lot. The lot was platted in 1975. I have it highlighted in pink. It was part of a plat that included the lot to the south, the neck lot that has the larger lot area that the house is on. So this, then, is the survey showing the footprint of the house and where it would be located. They're proposing a 52.8-foot front yard setback from McCauley Terrace, which is not dissimilar to the other homes fronting McCauley Terrace Circle. The home that is further to the west is actually 55 feet away from McCauley Terrace right-of-way, and then there's a double that is on the corner of the frontage road in McCauley Terrace, and that is located approximately 39 feet away. This is the survey with a number of areas highlighted. The areas highlighted in orange are actually drainage and utility easements where you cannot locate a home within. The dotted lines are actually the indication of the setback areas where you would be allowed to build according to the required setback. Again, this is the front yard setback that's required. It's dictated by the property to the south that's at that 152-foot setback. You have a side yard setback of a minimum of 10 feet, and then there's a 75-foot setback from the lake. And then the drainage and utility easement that you have to stay out of in the orange area, so the blue area, is actually the buildable area of the lot. This is the property that is to the north, and it's actually fronting McCauley Circle, 6416 McCauley Circle, so their backyard backs up to the subject home or property. This home is at 6445 McCauley Terrace. This is the home that's on the neck lot that's 152 feet back from McCauley Terrace right-of-way. This is the house behind that house that actually is along the lake, and that's addressing off of 6429 Margaret's Lane. There are two homes that are landlocked, and they have a driveway access that goes off of Margaret's Lane, which is much further to the south. This is the property at 6447 McCauley Terrace, one of the homes that fronts McCauley Terrace, and they have a 55-foot front yard setback off the cul-de-sac. And then this is the double at 6437 and 39 McCauley Terrace, and they have a 39-foot setback from McCauley Terrace. The home will be a two-and-a-half-story walkout with a three-car garage. This would be the lower level, elevator, or lower level floor plan, the main floor plan, and the upper level with a loft. Staff does believe it to be reasonable. The proposed use is permitted in the R1 zoning district. It meets all of the requirements in terms of setback height and coverage. The coverage actually is 10% of the lot. They're allowed to go up to 25%. The home is appropriate in size and scale for the nearly one-acre lot. The improvements will enhance the property and not detract from the neighborhood. The adjacent neighbor to the south is located approximately 93 feet from the proposed garage of the subject home, so the spacing between the two homes is quite generous. The improvements will provide a reasonable use of a rather large lot that is virtually unbuildable, given the required setbacks, the utility easements, and the location that they, the distance that they need to keep from the lake. The required front yard setback from the lake and the drainage utility easements reduces that buildable area to that small blue area that is actually down the hill from the elevation of the street. Are there practical difficulties that prevent a reasonable use of the site? Staff believes the proposed variance is reasonable and that there are practical difficulties. The new home is not oversized for the lot. Will be in keeping with other homes in and around the Indian Hills area. The other homes have front yard setbacks off of McCauley Terrace, again, of 39 and 55 feet, so this would not be dissimilar to what is occurring already along the cul-de-sac. Staff believes the proposed variance is reasonable, given that the required setback renders the 44,099 square foot lot generally unbuildable. The lot is large with generous spacing between the new home and the neighboring structures. The purpose behind the ordinance is actually to maintain an established pattern that's already on the block and not to introduce a continual erosion of an established pattern. There really isn't a pattern on the cul-de-sac. I mean, there's a home behind a home next to this property. The other two homes that front McCauley Terrace, this will blend in with that and will not compromise the purpose of the ordinance. Are there circumstances that are unique to the property? Again, the existing lot is subjected to a front yard setback that is unreasonably deep. When the lot was platted to the south, it's a neck lot. Our subdivision ordinance wouldn't allow that without a variance currently. Will the variance alter the essential character of the neighborhood? No. The proposed home will be reasonable for the size of the lot, given the surrounding homes and the character of the neighborhood consists of a variety of housing styles. Staff does recommend approval of the request, the variance, based on the following findings: the proposal meets the required standards for a variance because the practical difficulty is caused by the location of the home to the south and the required front yard setback based on the neck or flag lot. The encroachment into the setback would be consistent with other homes fronting the cul-de-sac. The request is reasonable, given the location of the adjacent neighbor to the street and the setback required from the lake and the easement areas within the lot. Approval of the variance should be subject to the following conditions: the home must be constructed as per the proposed plans, date stamped May 6, 2013. Final grading and drainage plans are subject to review and approval by the city engineer prior issuance of building permit. Submit a copy of the Minnehaha Creek Watershed District permit. The city may require some revisions to the approved plans to meet the district requirements, and the execution and recording of a conservation restriction, easement 75 feet upland from the ordinary high level of Arrowhead Lake. With that, I will stop and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions for Ms. Akers? Commissioner Grayble.
Chris, I noticed on page A9 the drawing that you have, that you had there, the picture that you just had there.
This one?
Yeah, that one. The house on the south, it looks like there's an encroachment onto that lot, right into the buildable area. Do you know what's going to happen with that?
Oh, right here?
Uh-huh.
That's actually the house that's behind the neck lot, and that is a private property matter that would have to be resolved by the two property owners.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right, seeing none. Is the applicant or representative of the applicant present? Why don't you come on up, introduce yourself, and if you have something to show us, the center is fine. If not, why don't you use one of the two-side podiums? The speakers work better on those microphones.
Good evening, and we are here representing the University of St. Thomas. My name is Teresa Ling, residing at 2047 Grand Avenue Apartment 1, and I am a real estate studies major, currently a junior at the University of St. Thomas.
Welcome, Ms. Ling.
My name is Theodore Johnson. I reside at 554 Montrose Lane, St. Paul, Minnesota. I, too, am a real estate major at the University of St. Thomas, and we are both interning on this project and using it as a learning, a learning tool to excel in development.
So you're not the only students here this evening learning about the planning process. Welcome, Mr. Johnson. Tell us about your proposal.
Well, we are proposing a variance that would move the setback from 152 feet back to 52.8 feet, so our property is buildable, because with the 152-foot setback, like with the neighboring property, it would create an unbuildable situation for our property.
Tell us a little bit about the house and what, why is this a St. Thomas project, and what's the background on that?
Well, this is an opportunity to raise money for the university and for the real estate program specifically, and this would create money for the program and make opportunity for scholarship. I am fortunate enough to be able to go to St. Thomas with some scholarship, and this would give the opportunity to more, for more students to study the program of real estate at St. Thomas.
And are you going to follow this through, pass the permit process, through the building process?
Yep, we will be interning throughout this whole summer until it sells, potentially at the end of the summer.
Terrific. Any other questions for the applicants? Anything else you want to add to Ms. Akers' report? All right, well, thank you for being here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
This is a public hearing, and so if there's anyone in the audience who would like to come forward at this time to comment on the request for the variance, this would be the time to do it. Just come up and state your name and address and give us your perspective. All right, seeing no comments, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. In a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. All right, the public hearing is closed. We'll bring the deliberations back to the Commission. Are there comments, questions, or discussion? Commissioner Platter.
Carrie, the residential updates we're working on right now, this would not be a variance, right? Or would it still be?
This would be a variance, even under the new regulations, because this is a vacant lot.
Oh, okay. Gotcha. All right.
Other questions or discussion? It sure seems to me to be the classic case. I mean, the anomaly here is this neck lot, the frontage. We always have trouble with these average front yard setbacks on cul-de-sacs, but this one is particularly anomalous because the one right next door to it has this long trail leading to the property, so that 152 isn't really an honest setback from the cul-de-sac. So in my view, I'm supportive of the, of the application. If there's any further discussion, Commissioner Scherer.
I would concur, and I like the idea that was observed by the applicant in the documents about the ability to retain more trees as a result of the proposed positioning of the property. I also think up on the cul-de-sac, if we ignore the neck lot, the positioning of this house is actually better in relation to the other houses that are on the cul-de-sac.
I would also note, and the applicant would have no way of knowing how happy that this makes this body, but it is setback 139 feet from the water body. So we don't have to have a long discussion about that this evening. So I would entertain a motion. Commissioner Grayble.
Mr. Chair, I move approval, subject to the findings in the staff, findings and conditions in the staff report.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Variance is granted. Next up is final rezoning and final development and final plat. Anderson KM Builders for Byerly's at 7171 France Avenue. Carrie, you're going to introduce this?
I am.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chair, members of the Commission. A site you're all familiar with. This is the existing Byerly's Grocery Store site on France Avenue on the east side of France. So look at the existing Byerly's as it sits out there today. The applicant is proposing to tear down the existing store and build a new 47,000-square-foot Byerly store. This, the one that's out there now, is about a little over 56,000, 57,000 square feet. So it would be a little bit smaller store. They would move the store out to the corner of France and Hazleton. Also built on the site would be a, just over 10,000-square-foot retail area here, and another retail, about 11,000 square feet of retail in this location here, with 234 apartment buildings within three buildings, as shown on the screen here. So just to take a quick step back and take a look at how we've come to where we are this evening. Back in early 2012, the applicant came in with this sketch plan to, to build a new Byerly's on the store with housing, on the site with housing above it. This was the sketch plan reviewed by Planning Commission and City Council. As you see, the loading docks face the promenade, and the buildings essentially were in the middle of the site. So based on the comments that the applicant received during the sketch plan review, they then came back this past January. Some of the comments and suggestions were to move the building up to the street, which they've done, engage the promenade more, move those loading docks away from the promenade, and make it a more pedestrian-friendly development. So this is a look at the preliminary development plan that was reviewed by the Planning Commission. Some of the suggestions that you made at that time were to beef up the pedestrian ways as it went through the site, engage the promenade a little bit more, and they did come back with those plans. This is the preliminary plan that was actually approved by the city council, and some of those upgrades included adding an additional connection to the promenade for bikes here, widening the sidewalk and the path, and making it a little more prominent through the site. This, again, was approved by the city council within the last couple of months. So the request before the Planning Commission now is final rezoning to PUD, so it would be its own zoning district for this site, final development plan, and final plat. Just to, and the applicant will go through this in a little more detail, but I'll show you some renderings here of what the project would look like. So again, here's the new Byerly's store. The timing for construction, the new store, should this project be approved, the new store would be constructed while the existing store, which is located roughly in the middle of the site, would remain open. So the, the new store would be constructed, and this housing element back here, housing A, would, would also be under construction at that same time. Once the new Byerly's store was completed, then the old store would be removed, and then the two middle buildings would be constructed. So here's a look at the parking ramp. There's a covered walkway that's proposed, this location here. Just to quickly run through some of the elevations. The building materials, which the applicant has a materials board that they will present. Brick building. The apartments would be a brick, the brick base somewhat matched the Byerly's with stucco and metal panels. So just to quickly go through the site access and the site plan, there's a new right-in, right-out proposed on France Avenue, as we discussed through the preliminary plan. This configuration has been approved by the county to improve site circulation through the site. There would be a right-in, right-out only on Hazleton Road. Also, a cul-de-sac, a new cul-de-sac on Hazleton in this location here. And the Planning Commission may remember that initially when this plan came in, the applicant was negotiating with the property owner in this location here in regard to this access point. They're now in agreement with, with the configuration that you see on the screen, so there's a slight encroachment onto that property with that new drive aisle, with that new roundabout. In regard to the loading dock for the Byerly's store, it would function similar to the Whole Foods, this location here. The trash enclosures would be within the existing, or within the proposed retail space, so there would be no outside dumpsters. Full complement of landscaping is proposed around the perimeter of the site. Based on our code, 68-over-story trees are required. There are 98, a little over 98, proposed here, so it does meet our, our ordinance, along with the full complement of under-story trees. In regard to signage, we're suggesting that the signage be wrapped into the PUD and the regulations included within the ordinance that's before you this evening. The signs are generally code-compliant with the underlying PCD3 zoning district. Some of the exceptions would be this 71 France, the name of the, of the development itself. This would be an additional sign above what the code would allow. This would be located at the entrance, that new right-in, right-out on France. Let's see, we'll go back. That would be this location right here. There's also another one proposed on the wall as you would enter in off of Hazleton. Additional signage that's not required under our code, the Planning Commission may recall that we don't allow any signage to face public parks, the promenade or Centennial Lakes. In a sense, when that development developed, the goal was to, for the commercial areas to turn its back to, to the public space, which is kind of contrary to what we're trying to accomplish here. So the applicant is proposing this little monument sign located right here, and I'll show you where that would be on the site plan. It would be on that pedestrian connection, kind of an invitation into the site off of the promenade. So again, that wouldn't be allowed under our, our current sign regulations, but would be under the PUD. Lastly, they are suggesting two monument, or pylon signs. One, this is, would be the look of both signs. It would be 20 feet tall and 100 square feet in size. So again, the location would be on this corner here and the corner on Hazleton. Under the existing zoning regulations, the secondary sign would be limited to 50 square feet in size, and they're suggesting 100. Again, it's, it's for wayfinding into the site with the multiple uses that are going on here. So those would be the exceptions to the code. All the other wall signage would be code-compliant. The proposed density here is 24 units an acre, similar to what we reviewed as part of the preliminary development plan. As you recall, a parking and traffic study was done by R.L.K. that concluded that this development can be supported by the adjacent roadways, in particular with the improvements that are contemplated here to France with that new right-in, right-out. Will actually improve circulation. And also that the proposed parking will adequately serve the property. In regard to, you recall there's a preliminary and final plat suggested here. Currently, the site exists as two parcels, and they're proposing to subdivide them to create four parcels on the site. So this is a look at the proposed final plat. Again, there would be, there would be drainage utility easements established over the public utilities. With that, a park dedication of $5,000 per unit is required. So that would be, as the staff report indicates, due at the time of a building permit application, that they would pay those fees. The applicant is, is suggesting that those fees be due at the time of a certificate of occupancy to build a little more flexibility for them. Staff would be okay with that, with that change to the condition, if the, if the Planning Commission so chooses to amend that, that condition. Also, you recall the promenade plan included a water feature located in this location here. This is essentially a high point on the, on the site, as we've talked about previously, so it's not needed for their drainage, drainage plan. They'll have an underground drainage facility underneath the parking lot. So this water feature would be a public feature essentially for the promenade. The park dedication funds would be used to construct, build, and maintain that, that water feature. Also, the city would require, would purchase an easement over that, over the, that water feature. That also would come out of the park dedication fund, so it would be less whatever the value is established for those uses. So in conclusion, staff believes that this project, it's consistent with the preliminary development plan. Very little changes have been made per the original plan. The plans are consistent with our comprehensive plan, which has designated this property for mixed uses, which the proposal is. It creates an efficient and creative use of the property, pulling the buildings up close to the street, again, suggested in the comprehensive plan, mixing the uses. This is really the first project that provides a connection from France Avenue to the promenade, again, kind of opening up that commercial development to some of our public space. They have indicated sustainable principles that are included. They've agreed to participate in the Excel Energy Program with an attempt, or they've pledged an energy savings goal of at least 5%. The city council requested that they at least try to meet a goal of 10%, so that's the condition that's carried forward before you this evening. Again, it's a high-quality design with the brick and stucco and metal finishes, and the traffic study has concluded that the roadways can support the project. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the PUD, the final rezoning, and the final plat, subject to the findings and conditions that are outlined in your staff report. With that, I can stand for questions.
Thank you, Carrie. Questions for Commissioner, for Planner T? Commissioner Grayble.
Carrie, looking at this drawing, I just want to make sure I understand how the traffic flow goes. If you're coming south on France, you would turn left onto Hazleton and then enter right there at that first right-in, I assume.
Right here, correct.
If you're coming north on France, you could enter at this right-in here, or you could go all the way up to Hazleton.
Correct.
I noticed that, is, is the cut into the home store lot, is that, is that, is that final?
I believe that is. They have They have negotiated that with the Macy's store to the south.
Okay. And then, if you're coming west on Hazelton, it looks like the only way to get into the area is to come around the roundabout and enter through the back. Is that correct?
Correct, that's right.
Commissioner Potts?
I carry a couple of questions back relative to the timing of some of the pieces of this, and also how you described the park dedication fee collection. You said the store and housing A would be constructed first, and I assume occupied, while B and C are constructed. When do we contemplate doing the public improvements, doing that pond? And is the city comfortable with the timing of the fees being paid and our use of them to build that?
Yeah, we haven't talked about the timing yet of the construction of the pond in this location here. It would likely come after that building has been constructed. So we would at least have the fees from that first building prior to construction.
So they'll be collected building by building as the COO gets issued?
Correct, yep. Based on the units, again, less the value of the easement that needs to be obtained and the work that goes into the pond.
Thank you.
Commissioner Platter?
Just my opinion, but I would not supporting deferring those fees to the CO versus a building permit, my opinion.
Commissioner Grable?
Yeah, I echo that, but if, why would, if they didn't pay upfront, why would, if we approved the project, why wouldn't, why would it be building by building? I don't quite understand that.
Yeah, that's not untypical, because the fee is based on, it's a per-unit fee, $5,000 per unit. It's typical, I guess there's a couple of ways that are, when those fees are collected. They can be collected at the time of filing of the final plat, where it's all collected upfront, or at the time of a building permit, when that's pulled prior to issuance of a building permit, that they would pay those fees, especially in a phased development, we see that more often.
I guess the concern I have is we've seen phased developments that never get to the other phases, and it's a lot of money for the city, and I think, you know, I agree with Commissioner Platter.
Carrie, how much are we talking about on the park dedication fee, assuming all of the units that are planned or constructed?
It's about $1.2 million. Now, that's less the value of the easements that need to be obtained.
And do we know the value of the easements and of the?
We have not settled on an exact price on that yet.
With respect to that, I know that this water feature is something that we discussed at the preliminary phase, and I know the council discussed it as well, but it strikes me that part of the park dedication fees is to either set aside, in which case that easement would make sense, or in lieu of setting aside space for parks, to kind of enhance the parks. And I wonder if the council has consulted with the park commission or the park board on this, if there's been any input as to, if this is the appropriate way to spend park dedication fees adjacent to the promenade, which is in essence a park. Do you have any background for us on that?
Yeah, they have not. That might be what the council would like to do, is to have them have some input into the design and what that feature looks like.
Because I don't, I mean, if we're, if what we're going to do is use the park dedication fees to essentially acquire or to have the developers set aside space for parkland, you know, how it's used, we ought to be thinking through, and maybe the water feature is the right way to do that, but I don't, I guess I don't know that that's the case. Commissioner Shear?
Carrie, just a point of, I guess, vernacular clarification. You mentioned a couple of circumstances which have triggered the payment of park dedication fees, but none of the ones that you mentioned use the words "at time of occupancy." Have we ever done this at time of occupancy?
Not to my knowledge. It's either been at the time of a building permit issuance or at the time of final plat.
Okay, thank you.
And one thing to add to on this park feature, the city has engaged URS, who did the design of the whole entire promenade plan. You recall Arise Picans, who kind of did that design. He's, they're in the beginning stages of designing what that water feature might look like. So we may bring that to the park board for their feedback as well.
You know, the other thing with respect to the timing is, you know, if it, if the park, I understand the notion of the park dedication fee being paid as the building permits come out, because Commissioner Grable is correct, another phase might not happen, but if the other phase doesn't happen, they're not really obligated to make the park dedication payments because they don't have those extra units. But my issue with delaying it until certificate of occupancy, now you've got the whole building there and you don't have, then you've got to wait to do the construction until after, construction of the park features until after you've completed the construction. You know, the place that comes to mind for me is the waters where we're kind of simultaneously, there's construction going on there of the primary structure, but a large part of what is paying for the reconstruction and redevelopment of Countryside Park is the park dedication fees that came from that, and that's going on this summer at the same time, so.
Yeah, that's an excellent point.
Commissioner Forrest?
I have another kind of blanket statement, I guess, but my concern about the pond and the park dedication fees is that, in many ways, that appears to me as something attractive from a city park, but not part of a city park, because the southern bridge is to their private bike storage for that building. The, there's a walkway entrance across to retail where somebody on the property will be benefiting, as well as access for the public, I grant that. And otherwise, it's pretty much just attractive landscaping for the apartment building along that west side. It's all like private patios or garden areas for the apartments themselves. So it's like our park dedication fees would be going toward their landscaping for their building, just as much or more so as it would for the promenade's benefit.
Those fees wouldn't go toward building this connection here, that bridge. It would just be for the pond and some of the landscaping, maybe bench features around the.
I guess my concern is that how much of that pond area would actually ever be used by the public, other than to walk past it? It's an attractive thing from a city park, more than, to me, more than it is part of a city park.
Well, it looks like from the site plan that part of it is in the city's property and part of it is on the applicant's property.
Right.
Commissioner Potts?
I guess since this pond is basically associated with building A, I think what I'd like to see is a, what I'd like to have is a clear understanding of the cost of constructing the pond, of acquiring the maintenance easement, so that if the city chooses, they could build this at the same time building A is going on. And so to that end, I'd like to see the park dedication fees for building A collected at the time of either plat or building permit. And then for buildings B and C, I think there'd be, you know, maybe there's some more latitude, but to ensure that the city can collect those funds and put them to use with Phase 1, if you will.
So, so I don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves here. We're still kind of in the asking questions. We haven't had the applicant come up yet. They may have some very compelling reasons why we should put this off, so we'll wait to hear from them before we commit ourselves, but I think you're hearing some anxiety on this topic. Commissioner Platter, did you have it?
I was going to say, is us, is part of the proposal voting on this or not? Is it to defer the fees? I guess, are they tied together, so?
The staff recommendation is to collect the fees at the time of building permit.
Okay, so if we do not agree with that, we would be voting against the project then, correct?
No, you can change conditions. You can add or subtract conditions.
Okay, so staff, okay.
Any other questions for Carrie at this time? I think this would be a good time for the applicant to come up and tell us a little bit about the project.
Mr. Voss, can I just, we'll have to have you use that microphone. Welcome. Thank you, my apologies. Jim Voss with Cressa Partners. On behalf of the applicant, Mr. Chair, greetings, members of the commission. Nice to see you again, members of Edina. Thank you for letting us present this project once more. I have some images that we can use. Carrie's slides also work well. And it struck me as I was preparing for this evening that I could spend 30 or 40 minutes walking you through any number of details on the project, and that might not be the best use of your time. So I'd be happy to stand for questions as you have them, but there are a couple of points that I think ought to be identified first as we think about the plan, and I'm going to see if I can align that, unless we can jump back to the slide that Carrie had up last, the site plan. See if we can use that, that might work easiest. As Carrie pointed out, thanks to your input and the two opportunities that we had to be with you in the preliminary site plan review, we did extend the width of the sidewalk and this pedestrian feature and create a little bit more of a meandering walk, and the sense of a pedestrian experience through the site is something that we heard loud and clear, and have tried to think hard about over the last couple of months as we've looked at all the variations on the site. One of the places that that became more evident was on this roadway, as we were able to shift that approximately six feet to the east, that gave us room to create a line of trees here. And so we've got a little bit more of a tree-lined boulevard than just a hard, cold building and a sidewalk. And that was something that we also heard you feeling pretty strongly about, and we appreciate. One of the areas that the other pedestrian experience was emphasized comes back to your most recent conversation, which is the water feature. Virtually, our drawing does not include what URS has proposed. That's been a conversation that we had with staff and with URS. It's been presented, I understand, to the watershed district. Today, the pedestrian and bike paths are split with a series of waves. The proposal that URS has made is to take the pedestrian path that you see here and swing it to the west side of the pond. So the pond feature, the water feature, would actually ride between the pedestrian path and the bike path, and make that much more of an Edina experience as opposed to a 71 France experience. We're sensitive to that. Frankly, I think that makes great sense. It gives us a gentle transition from the building to some trees, to some landscaping, to a walkway, to the water feature, and it creates this gradual transition between the private and the public. And we're advocates for that. Our drawing doesn't show that, because frankly, we met with URS after these drawings were prepared. Our proposal is that we would actually build that water feature as we're doing the rough grading and the final grading for the site, and that we would do that and then offset our park dedication fee by the actual cost incurred in creating that water feature. So the proposal that we would pay the water, the park dedication fee at the time of COO is so that we would have already incurred the construction cost, and we could better calculate the appropriate offset. It's not an adversarial position about when we pay or what we pay. It's frankly easier for us to do that work, because we're going to be moving some dirt, and so we ought to be moving dirt kind of on both sides of the line, because that's where the water feature ends up, that's where the walkway ends up. It's meant to be a collaborative effort, not a competition about who gets the money or when. It's just a timing conversation, so I hope you'll understand our preference on that. It's meant to be a collaboration. The only other material changes that we have made to this plan since you last saw it would be the addition of a stronger mezzanine feature above the store. You may recall that originally we had a strong corner feature on both the northwest corner and southwest corner of the store with a small mezzanine. We've elected to continue that mezzanine. It was drawn, it's shown in the drawings that you have in your packets. Again, I can walk you through those details if you'd like, but that mezzanine creates some additional office space upstairs. We'll be doing some glazing there. It's set back from the west edge of the building, so it creates the podium. That's articulated and referenced in a number of your documents. The only other material change is a slight upgrade to the exterior materials and the housing. I have all the material boards here. We had them last time, but we didn't have a chance to talk about them, so if you'd like, I'd be happy to have the architects present the materials to you. But frankly, I know last time we were here, you had a number of questions, and I'd be happy to take time now to answer any of those. Mr. Chair?
Let me just jump in on a couple. One of the things that I think might be different from when we last saw this is the covered walkway in the parking lot.
Yes, thank you.
Can you elaborate on that?
I'd like to mention that. In the drawings that you have that show the perspective views, you'll notice that we have created a covered walkway through the parking lot area here, coming along. The design of those columns is intended to match the covered walkway that we had along the front of the store, which you saw previously. Front of the store, it's two columns under a canopy. On the walkway, it'll be a single column under a canopy that'll have two tiers, just to account for the elevation change that's there. And our hope is that that creates a more comfortable place for customers to walk in and makes what would be the far south end of the lot a little more accessible to the store. Today, customers are experiencing a very large lot, and they never have to park out at the end, and we've decided to resize that lot so we eliminate the waste. But that means people will be parking farther out, and so we want to make sure that folks feel comfortable coming from those outer edges of the lot, small as it is now, up under a covered walkway in inclement weather into the store.
Can you talk a little bit about the materials that are associated with that? What, you know, maintenance, how they're going to wear over time?
The base of that will match the stone on the building, so again, we're looking for some real consistent materials, metal columns, flat roof. We've got some drainage designed in through the columns. I don't believe that maintenance will be an issue, and again, our intent was to make the metal edging of that, the same brown metal that matches the store. So very consistent materials that will look like it's part of the same design and architecture.
Another item that Carrie talked a little bit about was the signage, that it is generally compliant with the existing kind of requirements, but that there are a couple of places where you're proposing to depart from those requirements. I think one up at the roundabout at Hazelton, and then the other coming off the promenade. Can you just speak to those two departures and why you think they're appropriate?
Well, so let's deal with the promenade one first. That was a sign that we had not originally intended, and if you recall the first planning commission conversation that we had in the preliminary site plan review, the strong request of the planning commission was that we invite the public into the site, not only to create the pedestrian access, but to alert folks to the opportunity to experience what's here. And so we drafted that sign, as small as we thought was appropriate, to respond specifically to your request, to invite the public off the promenade onto the property. We think it's a great idea. We hadn't originally intended to put it there, but it was candidly your request, Mr. Chairman. The pylon sign that we've proposed at the roundabout at Hazelton, as Commissioner Grable pointed out, if you're coming westbound on Hazelton, the only way to access any of the retail is at that roundabout. And it struck us that it made sense for a significant sign there for Byerlys, for any of the retailers, so that visitors who are coming there can make a logical left turn around the roundabout and into the property. Otherwise, they're not able to access the property because of the right-in, right-out structure here and the way the median is drawn. We don't want folks trying to make that U-turn and come around. We don't want that safety problem. We don't want to force people out onto France, down to Gallagher, and then U-turn and back up. So we wanted to create that. The signage requirements that the city establishes are, in some places, specific to a development, and others specific to a parcel. Because we have four parcels, but one PUD and two uses, we're asking for your latitude on that, because it strikes us that the best way for the project to work is to have the two pylon signs. If we went after four separate parcels, I don't think we're asking for four signs. We wouldn't advocate for four signs. But we do think it's best for traffic movement, for safety, and for just logical development here that we have the two pylon signs.
So one pylon sign is at the Hazelton roundabout, and then the other is down at the right-in, right-out?
Yes. So again, what we think of as the two primary entrances to the site, yep.
And then is there signage on the side of the building at the corner of France and Hazelton?
There is signage on the exterior of the building.
Right.
And then we have a sign on this angled face of the building, so as folks come in, it's there.
Do you have a drawing of the pylon sign that's on Hazelton?
The pylon sign that's illustrated on this page, and it's in your plan set.
Yep.
We intend to use the same design and same scale of pylon in both locations for consistency.
The last question that I had, and then others may as well, on the preliminary plat, well, the final plat, and I don't know, Carrie, if you have the drawing, I noticed that one of the lots has an odd kind of flag configuration, the lower right-hand lot. Can you explain why that's necessary to do that that way?
Happy to do so. If you'll look at that flag leg, and then I'm going to jump back to the site plan, oops, there we go, one page. That leg is essentially the driveline that creates access to the underground parking that services building A and building B. So for the phasing, because building A gets built first, we needed to create that driveline to access the underground parking. That will then be under a shared easement between buildings A and B for future parking.
And then there'd have to be a cross-easement for the parcel on the west as well, right? I mean, you'd have to have access across the parcel on the west.
Yes, yes. Yeah, there will be shared access and parking easements for all the roadways running through the site, north, south.
Okay.
Yeah. And as Director Teague mentioned, we have And as Director Teague mentioned, we have secured a verbal agreement with Macy's. The people have been traveling, so we don't have the signed agreement, but I spoke with their store planners today. They're on board with this development. We've also had a number of conversations with Mr. Wolfson, which is the property to the northeast, and he and I are meeting tomorrow morning to finalize the easement document that we've given him. So access easements for both Mr. Wolfson and for the Macy's property are part of all of the easements that will run through the site in the plat.
All right. Other questions for Mr. Voss? Commissioner Grable?
The underground water storage in the big parking lot. How's that going to work and where will that water eventually empty?
Eventually, that water empties. So the large parking lot here, which is 180 stalls in aggregate, will have essentially a pipe gallery there that will collect stormwater. Some of that will percolate when it overflows, then it runs into the storm sewer that moves through the property in this area and eventually moves to the southeast. We're hoping to collect, as I think you know, most of the roof water here and use that some into the water feature to create water because that's a high point. So we're trying to subsidize that water feature with natural runoff. And then what we're proposing is that in the housing development, the other surface water moves into what is an underground, we call it a Swedish storage system. It's a rock system with large voids. So the trees grow well there. We can store an enormous amount of storage water underground there, stormwater, that then naturally perks slowly. We'll actually probably put a liner underneath so that the water doesn't perk out too fast. None of that ends up in the stormwater system. So as we think about sustainability, and the PUD advocates sustainability, and we talked last time about 10% energy reduction, there's other sustainable things that we're doing in terms of stormwater and LED and such. The water storage that we plan for the housing is actually probably one of the most sustainable stormwater features you'll find at least in Edina, if not in the Twin Cities.
And then the water from the grocery store, that goes into the?
That ends up in this pipe gallery here under the parking lot, and as they say, seeps out and then runs away. We'll be looking, I think we talked about this previously, this darker green line here is intended to be a swale and a rain garden. And we're looking at possibly doing that here as well. Just depends on the final grading and how we set that up. We're trying to manage as much stormwater as possible onsite so that we minimize what goes offsite. The watershed district, by the way, has seen this, and they gave us our approval last week. We don't have the paperwork, but we do have that if you'd like it.
And I assume then the, who's going to be responsible for maintaining the stormwater management system?
Loans and Byerly's.
Okay. And that'd be part of a developers' agreement, some kind of maintenance agreement?
Yeah.
Okay. Other questions? Commissioner Shearer?
Just to follow up a little bit on the signage questions that were initiated earlier. As I understood Commissioner Teague's, or excuse me, Planner Teague's presentation, the request for the 100-square-foot sign is on France and 50-square-foot on Hazelton?
We have requested 100 square feet on both. And the zoning ordinance today, again, depending on your interpretation, would allow one at 100 square feet and one at 50 square feet. And our request is that we'd have a variance to allow 100 on both.
Okay. And how tall is your 100-square-foot sign proposed to be?
On the plan that you've received, we indicate a total maximum height at the cap of 20 feet, six-foot space below, 11 feet of sign face, 11 feet six, and then a little bit of cap. We've been encouraged to provide a fair amount of landscaping low, and so our intention was to pull the sign up so that it wasn't blocked by the landscaping that's there. Maximum height is 20 feet.
It's a very high sign.
To see over the roundabout that's being installed and the landscaping, yes, just to put in and to make room for people to read the signs, we need that.
We don't have any visuals that show that in relation to the buildings, do we?
No, I'm sorry. I don't believe that any of the illustrations that we have show that. I apologize.
Thank you.
We haven't designed the roundabout either, so I don't know how tall that gets.
Commissioner Forrest?
First of all, I agree that's very tall. It's like the height of this room. So that's, to me, is kind of overkill. In fact, when I saw the name of the development is 71 France, I get that because you have 71 and various numbers for the addresses there. But then I started wondering, when you talk about signage needed for waymaking and the waymaking tools that we use now that talk to us in our cars or whatever we look at on our phones tend to go by addresses and you don't, you may end up somewhere in Golden Valley or something at that point, but...
I hope that's not the case.
My, I wanted to know, last time you, there was some presumption that the bus stop on France would be moved to Hazelton. And I'm wondering, has there been any further discussion with MTA about that? And if not, I, here you have this café area and everything else and additional retail on that property. I would like to see stair access or something to the bus stop on France, if that's going to remain.
I'd like to defer your question to the city staff. I know they've been in conversation with the MTC. And last we heard, it was proposed to move to Hazelton, but Wayne, can you respond to that, please?
Yes, Commissioner. We have throughout this process of dealing with the right-in, right-out on France Avenue, we've had Metro Transit in discussions with that. And actually, they want to move the bus stop that's located across from 72nd Street just to round the corner on Hazelton. They also have a bus stop just north of Hazelton on France Avenue for that northbound direction. The reason why they want to move that bus stop is that for the transit riders, it's really dangerous to cross 72nd Street at France. So they like to move it up to the corner so that they can use the crosswalks to access the bus stop. And then by moving it over to Hazelton and then on the north side is that they'll be able to, if they're going to be accessing the Byerly's store, they'll be able to walk back up the sidewalk to the front entrance of the Byerly's store versus using stairs. If we have stairs, they're obviously not ADA accessible, and then you have the issue of maintenance in the wintertime with steps down to that. So we're trying to remove all the pedestrians from right adjacent to France Avenue on the lower level. And I can probably pull up, actually, I could probably show you off of this one here. So I'm not sure if you can actually see, there's a, the sidewalk actually meanders towards the east because it climbs up about, there's about a five or six-foot drop at this location down to France Avenue. So there's actually going to be a retaining wall. There's one that exists today, but that'll be rebuilt. And then, so essentially, the bus stop that you're talking about was down in this location. And so that'll be moved up just on Hazelton Road at this location here. And then there's one just on the, just north of Hazelton Road around the corner going northbound. So if anybody's actually accessing the transit is that they would exit or enter at this location, and then if they want to get into the Byerly's store, they can walk back up to the Byerly's store itself. We'd like to keep all pedestrian traffic away from the lower side of the France Avenue just so that people aren't apt to cross that 72nd Street, kind of force them up to the signal lights or if they're, if they're going southbound is to force them down to Gallagher Drive.
And Wayne, is it, which intersections are we working on as part of the France corridor permeability work?
Part of the France project that we're working on, we're starting probably mid-July, is 66th Street, 70th, and 76th Street. And then we're filling in the missing gaps of sidewalk on the east side of France Avenue.
So this is not, I mean, Hazelton is not one of the intersections that is going to be worked on in terms of trying to make it easier for pedestrians to cross?
Yes and no. We're actually, it's not one of the major intersections. That's part of the federal project that we're doing. But as part of the Hazelton project on June 4th is that we're actually proposing these improvements to Hazelton Road to the City Council in a public hearing on June 4th. On next Tuesday night, we actually have an open house for the public down at Public Works to talk about these improvements on Hazelton Road. So our hope is that if this development gets final approval from the City Council is that we would then kind of simultaneously, at the same time, develop the plans for Hazelton Road and possibly have a bid out and potentially under a portion of it under construction this fall. If not, it'll be done in spring, early summer of 2014.
Okay. Commissioner Forrest?
Just as a follow-up. Now, where would the bus stop be located on Hazelton Road? Because when I looked at the map online today, they, it was, there already is a bus stop, according to that, on Hazelton Road, somewhere in this area.
There's actually a bus stop just east of the promenade. It would be just around, right where I have the arrow here, just as soon as it makes the corner, we'd be putting a bus stop. And we still have this portion to get through the final design of that to so that if a bus is pulling over that, the traffic is not going to be obstructed. They're making a left turn in that location.
So there might be some kind of indent or something there for the bus or?
Potentially, yep.
To encourage that use? Okay, great, thanks.
Other questions?
Other questions for Mr. Voss? Commissioner Platter?
I have a couple of questions. Maybe some are for architecture as well, but just kind of go down through the, we're talking about the pylon sign or sign you called on the promenade, and it looks like it's about seven feet tall. Just because that's such a pedestrian-scale sign, just thinking out loud, is that too tall there? Does it create kind of an impediment? I don't know, a safety hazard or something to hide behind even along the promenade?
Interesting question.
So should that be, my thought is like four feet maximum. And I'll just point out, I don't disagree with the sign, but I just point out that now we'll have commercial signage on the promenade, so, anyway.
Mr. Commissioner Platter, I think we'd be open to a little further conversation about the scale of that sign. Our intent was to create, again, this wayfinding invitation.
Yeah, I understand what you're trying to do. I just, the scale, I think, may be a little bit too large for that piece.
Well, and maybe that's part of the ongoing discussion about the design of the promenade interface as well. I mean, I assume if there's, you know, part of what it sounds like we don't know right now is exactly what the city is kind of looking at for that. And certainly, whatever signage ought to, whatever signage is there ought to be compatible with the kind of design that's happening down there.
My question too, and is there additional signage in the promenade that the city has put there, you know, from a wayfinding standpoint or anything? Is this, or maybe there isn't? Should this match it if that is the case? And I don't know that there is, but just a thought on that piece too. And then I had a question on the covered walkway. Was that something that you guys had, or was that something the city required? I don't call it.
It was something that I think was referenced a couple of different ways. There were a couple of requests to think about ways we could break up the scale of the parking lot. And that structure obviously separates some of the parking lots, so it creates a break. It also is something that corporately at Byerly's, we've felt, again, inviting folks comfortably through the parking lot or from the outer edges in. So I think that was a mutual effort, to be honest.
Okay. I would just disagree with it just on the record. What I've seen in those is that just they don't age well typically, and that doesn't necessarily get a lot of maintenance. And for whatever reason, they, seems like to me, they look out of place quickly with that. That's, I guess, not, if there's any support for that, but that my opinion on that. And then the other question I had was on the elevations, and I don't know if we've gotten to that point yet, but I did notice that the elevations are in here, but they only really show the, or call out the materials on one side in particular. I think it's the, I believe, the south elevation. So the other elevations, they don't call out the materials. I'm assuming they're the same, but...
They are. I assure you they are. And I'm sorry if we weren't clear about that.
And I think that's something that should be on here. I mean, to approve this, that should be, all those should be spelled out within each elevation because they're going to, they could potentially vary. Like, I'm trying to figure out on the, in particular, the west elevation facing France, the windows up above on the top, what I think you're saying now are those are clear glass because they're with the mezzanine? With the office, they're clear glass now because they're with the office mezzanine?
Have we determined the glass would be clear? Yes.
Okay.
So again, that's the step-back portion, it's the mezzanine.
So it's kind of hard to see that versus what, I think the more the, I want for intents, call it clerestory glass or the translucent glass that are in other areas. It's a little unclear to me on here. I think it's important to call those out appropriately as to what they're going to be, and then also the materials on all the elevations, just so we have that on record that, you know, if something, I don't know, particularly in the back, if something happens, and save a little money. And we don't, we don't want it dumbed down from what it's showing right now so that the materials are all shown at that piece.
I'll make sure our folks take good note of that. Thank you.
And then just my other comment on not deferring the park fees. And I guess I get your point, if you're going to build at the same time, you know, the potential to defer what is being built, you know, same time, maybe not so much, but the ones that would go somewhere else, in other words, that would go to another park. I still think those should be with the building permit because that is kind of the last chance at those things before things, other things happen. So those are my comments. Thanks. I mean, overall, I think it's a great plan. It'll be a great addition to this area. You know, that whole area just screams for something like this to be in there. So overall, I think it's a nice, nice project.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Commissioner Shearer?
I wanted to make an observation about the proposed wayfinding sign that the commissioner was just speaking about and several others were weighing in on. One of the things that is starting to come out as we're talking about this, and it is something that I thought about as I was reading the materials, we don't, because of current code, we don't have any such wayfinding signs on the promenade. And it strikes me that we should be very careful as we add them and that there is a real argument, as Commissioner, I think, Platter mentioned a minute ago, for consistency because as soon as we put one up, there are going to be other businesses that are going to request that they'd like one also. And my feeling is, I guess I would rather not do this on a case-by-case basis, but I'd rather have the city make a decision about what it would like to see along the entire promenade and, you know, develop signage requirements and limitations, et cetera. Maybe the city puts the signs there, I don't know. But I, this makes me a little nervous, to put up one rather significant sign that's particular to one commercial business when we know that will be the beginning of a series of inquiries along the promenade. So personally, I'd like not to see that sign placed by the proponent, but I'd like to be able to have additional discussions about what the city wants along the promenade in terms of wayfinding.
But is your objection to the existence of a sign or just to making sure it's compatible with whatever other design features we want to have for signage along the entire length of the promenade?
My tummy tells me I'm a little nervous about adding these at all because it could get to be a free-for-all. But if we're going to consider it because we want there to be the right kind of pedestrian access because it supports a philosophy that we're interested in, then I think we need to do it in a consistent, city-wide way, and we need to have some time to discuss the parameters of such signs.
Because I certainly agree with the, with the notion of compatibility and consistency. But I think, as Kerry pointed out in his presentation, I mean, we prohibited signage on the promenade, and it was really all part of trying to get these buildings to turn their back to the park, which is crazy. And so I'm in favor of more kind of permeability and less bright lines between the promenade and the surrounding properties. And so I think signage is a good idea for directing people to where you can get off the promenade with your bike or as you're walking, et cetera.
I don't disagree, but then I think we have to manage how it happens.
I agree with that.
And just having one commercial entity put a fairly significant sign that matches their decor out there is probably, in my opinion, not the way to start that project.
So I wonder, Kerry, is there a way to do, you know, maybe that signage becomes part of this kind of park dedication or the like that becomes a piece of what we are going to put there, or the developer is going to help us as a partnership in putting signage there in some way?
Mr. Chair, may I respond?
Yeah, go ahead.
I appreciate the thought that you're putting into this. I think it's a very interesting question, and the precedent that gets set here is material. Where you are the first site anywhere along the promenade to invite the public through their property. There's no place else where anybody accesses the promenade from a private property. Centennial Lakes, you've got a little bit of retail, but virtually every other intersection with the promenade is at a street corner. So again, we hadn't intended this. We candidly, when we came to you the first time, didn't have it because we recognized it was prohibited, and we're responding to your request. So I think we're interested in working with you, and as I say, the scale of it is an appropriate question, and we're interested in that. We frankly like the idea of inviting the public in, and so we, I think, would like to keep it. But if it's a further conversation another day about the scale or the design or the consistency with our own site, you have my pleasure. We're willing to be flexible, but I hope you'll recognize it's there at your request.
It is the precedent-setting factor that concerns me.
And I acknowledge that all day long.
As I now look at it, I understand we requested it, and I don't think it's a bad idea in general, but I think it has to be managed, because I perceive that there could be others that would latch onto this if they have the ability to have access.
Frankly, we agree that inviting others to access the promenade is probably a great thing for the park system.
For everybody.
And I, and I accept your concerns about the precedent.
If I could just chime in on the precedent, too. So the way this is set up, it's within the PUD ordinance that you could have a sign on the promenade, one sign here, 25 square feet maximum is the area, seven feet tall, you know, that, that could come down, or however, but the current ordinance, so that would be just specific for this site, so the ordinance would still prohibit signage that faces any park for any other property. So, as Nancy had pointed out, it would be case-by-case basis moving forward, until we made some changes to the sign ordinance.
So as part of the proposed rezoning to a planned unit development for this site, there would be a zoning provision that would allow this particular sign, but that doesn't mean it would be allowed elsewhere on the promenade?
Correct.
Absent a PUD of their own?
Sure.
Well, I still think the city should look at it from the whole promenade approach, regardless of what goes in here, and at the same time, I wouldn't want that to override, because it's allowed here, to override what the city may come back either.
And that could be part of a zoning ordinance amendment regarding signage facing any public park.
Commissioner Carpenter, and then Commissioner Carr, and then Commissioner Forrest.
Just on the subject of signage, it strikes me that whatever door we open is going to open up for virtually everything else. So we may talk about this being a one-time situation, but as soon as we put a seven-foot sign in the promenade in one area, somebody else is going to ask for it in another, and I think we need to be prepared that if that's how it's going to play out, and I think that is how it will ultimately play out, the promenade will become a much more commercial-oriented experience, which I think is contrary to what, I think, at least I believe the council was trying to do when they established this to begin with. So from my perspective, I'm not really supportive of the idea of having a commercial sign on the promenade, I don't think there's any need for it. I'm also not in support of the large signage, the 20-foot signage that's being proposed to be placed outside on the property, because I don't think there's any need for that either. I don't think anybody's going to have too much trouble finding their way into Byerly's. They're going to get there one way or the other, but I don't think they're going to need that kind of large signage. And as soon as we start doing that, somebody across the street's going to want a large sign, somebody else down the block's going to want a large sign, and we're going to become a neighborhood, a commercial or retail neighborhood, that's featuring large signage, and I just don't think that we need it, and I don't think it's necessary, particularly for the Byerly's development.
Well, and I'll get to, on that point, I do think it's important to remember, the, as I understand it, the sign that they're proposing at the right in, right out, meets our sign ordinance. Is that right, Carrie?
The one on France.
The one on France meets. So what they're asking for is an additional, basically double the size of what they would be permitted at the other entrance, is that...
I'm not advocating against what they can already do, I just don't know that I feel...
Saying you don't need two of those big signs, you can do one big one, one small one.
I prefer not to have any of them, but I, but...
We don't really have.
I understand we don't.
Okay. So, now Commissioner Forrest isn't even raising her hand anymore. I know, you're next. Then I'll come to Commissioner...
My only comment, should the signs be taken out of the PUD?
Jump right in.
Sorry. I'm sorry. That was my only, is this, does it need its own piece versus as part of this PUD, just a suggestion?
On the sign? All right, Commissioner Grable on the, on the sign.
In reaction to what was said, that sign on Hazleton is going to be next to a roundabout. If you've driven down France Avenue, the roundabout at Valley View has got about a, what is it, Wayne, 12-foot-tall mound in the middle of the roundabout, and so you're going to have to look over that, and that's one reason why you'd need a higher sign there, because it's going to be on that roundabout. I, you know, I think commercial business is entitled to have a sign that's viewable by the public, and I question the expertise of the commissions, looking at drawings, to understand how high a sign ought to be when they haven't been out and seen what the, what the topography is really going to be.
Commissioner Carr.
I would concur with those comments. I think the sign is appropriate in that spot. I think it would be difficult, you want it to be visible, people are driving around the roundabout. I think it, that is where the retail is, it's located at that location, so that is a good place for the sign, and I think higher up makes sense if there's shrubbery, et cetera, in the middle of the roundabout. So, I have some other comments on the easement, but maybe we'd have to, like to have some more discussion on the sign.
So, Commissioner Forrest, are you on the sign? So why don't we talk about the sign, and we'll come back. Commissioner Carr.
I'm just, I think tonight I'd like to come to some conclusion in our conditions that come up. Either that, that particular sign will have to go through for, on the promenade, I'm sorry, would have to go through some further review, or not, or I'd like to have some conclusion on that if there is, which I seem to feel there is some concern about that promenade sign. And I, there, the property where the theater used to be, they got a variance so that their signs do face the park on those retail stores, but that, then the store, those are the storefronts that are visible from the promenade, it's not a monument-type sign, signage that this would be. I'm kind of on the fence in not having any sign at all. I wouldn't like that, because I tend to be pretty rule-bound, and I'm not going to venture onto somebody's property if I don't know that I'm welcome there. So, the fact that you can't see the retail signage, because the apartment buildings are there, makes it a little bit difficult as a pedestrian to know that, yes, I go this way and I can go to that particular store. So, I understand the need for signage, but I'd like to see it really small and tasteful, and in line with what else is there in the park.
Commissioner Potts.
I guess to pick up on that, I'd propose some sort of a wayfinding sign as opposed to a commercial sign, and I think if, if I could go beyond that, just to talk about the, you proposed a collaboration, Mr. Voss, with the, with that whole area, I think that's a great idea, and really the best way to go with this, so long as the city's prepared, you know, with design and timing of construction and project management to do that collaboration, I think that would be, that'd be ideal, and perhaps the sign question could be, could be rolled into that.
Commissioner Carr.
On the promenade sign, I'm in favor of it. I think it is nice to know that you can go through that location to get up to the store and the retail businesses that are there. I think it's well-designed, and will tie in, I'm assuming it'll tie in with the construction materials of the apartment buildings that are there, so aesthetically, it's going to be looking attractive. I'm not that concerned about having consistency along the promenade of signs, if at some point in time, we later are presented with a request for a sign, I think, as long as it's tastefully done, I don't think you have to have all the signs look identical.
So, we've talked about the signage, we've talked about the canopy item, we've talked a little bit about the plat, and the park dedication items. Are there any other kind of topic areas? Commissioner Grable?
Yeah, I just want to make, just so I understand, despite the fact that the drawings that you have show the water feature on the west side of the pedestrian walkway, you're planning to move the walkway to the west side of the water feature, is that right?
That's been proposed by URS, the designers retained by the city for all of the promenade improvements, and I presume you're aware of the original promenade plan that actually had a substantial water feature that took a large portion of our site and the Macy's site and some other things, and I think the, the scale of that's being adjusted, but yes, the most recent plan that we, Director Hul and I met with the URS folks, has the walkway moving to the west edge of the water, probably with a hard wall there, so you could actually look over railing into the water.
Commissioner Carr.
One other comment on the easement. One thing I will be recommending to the other commissioners...
Which easement?
This is the water, well, the easement over the water.
Water feature, thank you.
The water feature, excuse me.
Sorry, just make sure I was tracking.
Yes. Is that I think it's quite critical that the value of the easement be agreed upon, and that value set before it goes to the city council. I think that's, I also believe that it should be quite negligible, if anything at all, because I do believe that water feature will benefit your property. It'll make it more attractive for you to get tenants at that building site, so, in a certain respect, I feel like that should be a contribution on your part to the city, rather than a negotiated item. So that's what I would recommend to the other commissioners. Also, I do believe it's quite important that, again, before the city council vote on this, that they know the value of the work that you're going to be performing. You indicated that you're going to be doing construction work, you will be moving some dirt, and that that, the value of that work will be deducted from your park dedication fee. I think it's important for the city to know what the value of that is, rather than end up negotiating that after the approval. And I personally don't have a problem with perhaps dedicating, you know, paying 50% of the park dedication fees at a later date to help, again, fund the water, the water project. So I didn't know if you'd have any comments on those?
Be happy to address each of those specifically. On the value of the land, we actually had an appraisal done a few years ago, when market values aren't as strong as they are today, and we've actually proposed to your economic development coordinator, Mr. Nundorf, a value that's below the appraised value, and so we've already tried to come up with a subsidized number. That conversation is ongoing at this point, the development agreement itself is not fully fleshed out. We do have a construction estimate for the water feature, but that estimate was based on a different design, and so we're waiting for URS to finish the design. Happy to put a boundary on that, and a dollar estimate on that, I think it's appropriate. We want to know if we incur the cost, that will be reimbursed. Obviously, we need to put a number on that, so I think you and I agree on that. It's worth you understanding as well, for all of the planning commissioners and the public as well, there is some contamination buried on the east edge of the site, and that contaminated fill that was placed there in the 60s, as they were filling in the old gravel pit, needs to be extricated and dealt with. Some of that fill is actually under the promenade, some is under our site. We'd be happy to cut a line and let you deal with yours. Extraordinarily inefficient for us to separate those. So we're already into the MPCA with a remediation action plan, which includes the land under the promenade, and the remediation that needs to be done there, and without your request, without any arm wrestling, we've just done that, because it's the smartest way. We'll have to do some allocation for cubic yards of soil removed, et cetera, et cetera, but we intend and have had reasonable negotiations with your staff on all of those matters, so that also is incorporated in cleanup work that you'd have had to do separately, that we can do much more efficiently as part of our project. I think we've worked beautifully with your staff on all of those matters, but thank you for asking.
And I assume, Carrie, that all of that stuff is subject of a, of a development agreement between the city and the developer that would outline the responsibilities of each side and, and moving ahead?
That's correct, and that developer's agreement would come back, let's assume the city council approves the project, it would come back after they've approved the project, once we've got all those numbers worked out.
Prior to a building permit paying issue?
Preferably, yes.
Right. Okay, and Commissioner Shear.
Are we sort of into summation comments?
Well, we haven't even gotten the public comment yet, so I want to get to that, unless there's topics here that we haven't touched on, I think we've touched on a few. Commissioner Forrest.
I would like them to go through the materials board with us.
Okay. Why don't, let's do that now. I think that's a good thing to do before we take the public comments, so members of the public can see that as well.
Commissioners, I'd be happy to have the architectural team from Pope Architects take you through materials. Paul Holmes is our lead architect, Matt Masika's been assisting, and the boards, I understand, weigh about 40 pounds each with all the bricks. So I'm going to get out of the way and hand over the microphone. I'll be happy to answer any additional questions that you have, though. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Voss.
Good evening, I'm Paul Holmes with Pope Architects. Let me begin with the materials for the housing buildings. What you have before you are the materials that will be incorporated into three housing buildings. They will be the same in many respects, different in merely the coloration of the stucco. The base material, the podium level, is composed of two kinds of brick, both iron-spot bricks that will be used in, and you can see the pattern, the lighter brick in pattern with the darker brick. And then the base of the, the top of the poured portion of the podium, this is cast concrete below, the top cap of that and the cap of the masonry at the podium is this precast material, this dark gray precast. And then above that, we have the metallic metal panel, metallic silver metal panel. These panels are about one foot in width, and of sufficient rigidity that there will be no canning or variation in the, in the face of the panels, so it'll be a very precise panel used on the face of the buildings. The field of the building is stucco, pardon me. We had previously talked about using a fiber cement material, and we actually want to use something that's more durable and takes less maintenance over time, and so we've selected stucco instead. And the stucco colors are what you see here. The three buildings, stucco A is used on building A, stucco B on building B, stucco C, as you might expect, on building C. And then the, the sign panel, stucco, is on the retail, both on building B and on building C. That's just the sign band. And then the, the cap flashing on the buildings is the gunmetal gray that we're showing here. The decks are aluminum-framed structure, they are black or gray in color, and then they're suspended. Any questions about the housing materials?
Commissioner Platter.
Sorry, is that real stucco that you're putting on?
It's real stucco.
It's not Eiffel's?
Not Eiffel's.
Genuine, 100%.
Moving to the store materials, again, we're using two bricks, both iron-spot bricks, these are Indicott materials. The, some of the bricks are the same as is in the mix of the housing, so we have a cross match on the bricks. This is the dominant brick field that you see on the store. This is thin brick that is actually cast into the face of the precast panel, so it's real brick, it's embedded in the precast panel. And then the accent bands that run horizontally are this lighter brick. The base material that you see is real casota stone, natural stone, running on the base of the store on all elevations. The columns, the columns for the canopy, and the columns for the covered walkway are the natural stone. The material that is exposed above the top of the brick is colored concrete, it's part of the precast matrix, and that's this material here. So it's, it's colored and textured, really, to emulate the stone and give us a match there. And then the metal coping and the standing seam roofing material is this dark bronze material here. I think that's pretty much all there is to say about the store. Questions about that?
What's the size of the brick?
This is a standard size brick, it's four by 12.
Okay, so it's not the...
Yeah, they're not the jumbos.
Commissioner Carr.
What is the material of the covered walkway roof material?
The covered walkway roof material will be steel-framed, it will have metal coping in this color, and a aluminum soffit material under it to conceal the underside of that. And then the columns are the casota natural stone. So, the covered walkway materials in construction is really of the same quality as the store. We really do want it to wear well, so. Any other questions?
Thank you. Other questions or comments from the commission before we go to public comment?
Sure.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Just have one quick question, it's curiosity more than anything else, but I'm wondering what the cost is roughly, construction cost for the covered walkway. You must have some rough estimate, I'm guessing.
I bet we do, and I have no dang idea. If we split out the cost...
Thank you so much.
Let me just go offline with my contractor for a minute. Do we have any idea, just, just for that piece?
Just approximately $200,000 for the covered walkway by itself.
All right, thanks.
Nice walkway. Commissioner Potts.
One other question, you brought up the fill you need to remove. Did you explore capping that in place at all? I mean, were it not for this water feature, is that something you'd pursue?
Because we'll be digging the parking lot basement, again, we're going two ground, two levels underground for parking, we knew we would be disturbing some of that soil, and so once you start, as you well know, once you start that, you kind of have to finish, and as we looked at where the... finish. And as we looked at where the water feature had always been proposed, we saw that that needed to be part of the same exercise. Our hope is that we can screen that material and reutilize most of the soil onsite under the Byerly's parking lot. The South Byerly's parking lot will be raised from its current elevation, so we're hoping to reuse most of the material onsite, but we do have to screen out the construction debris that's present. So we're looking at different alternatives for that today.
Thank you. Commissioner Kerr?
I have one final question on the covered walkway. What is the surface material there? Is it the asphalt, or is it something else there?
Underneath?
Underneath.
It's a concrete walk.
It's concrete, okay.
And are we heating that? And it will be a heated concrete walk as well. We'll be heating the walkway in front of the store and then heating that as well.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Voss. Don't go far. I'm sure there'll be more discussion. What I'd like to do now is open the, open the public hearing and invite comments from any members of the public who are here and would like to comment on the proposal before us this evening. If you could just come up to one of the side microphones, unless you've got something to show us on the overhead camera. Introduce yourself and share your thoughts. Not everybody at once. All right, I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing a rush to the microphone, so I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing in a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. All right, so the public hearing is closed. Now, Commissioner Shearer, we are moving to the summation part of this. If there's more discussion, I want to just kind of, by way of teeing this up, I think the things we've talked about is some signage issues, both the height of the two signs, one on Hazelton, one on France, the size of the one of those two signs, that's going to be an extra 50 square feet, and then the signage on the promenade. We've had some discussions about all of those things. We've had some discussions about the park dedication fees. The staff report recommends that they all be paid as part of, in advance of the building permit being issued, recognizing that building permits are likely to be issued at different times for different phases of the project. The applicant has suggested that there'll be some work that will be done in partnership with the city to prepare the site for some of the park dedication fee expenditures, and has suggested that maybe for building A, the park dedication fees wait until a later time, so that that can be determined. And then, I think those are the two big, oh, and the, we talked a little bit about the plating with the flag lot, but I'm certainly satisfied, I have one question on that, but I'm satisfied that we're in the right place on that. Are there other items that I'm missing? Is that, was the... So, Commissioner Shearer, I don't know if you want to summarize what your direction is?
Generally, really pleased with how the process has gone and how it's evolved. As with all projects, I think there are some things that some of us view a little more favorably than others, that there are nine people, there are nine opinions. I would say that I personally would second the remarks of Commissioner Carr regarding the park dedication fee and the, I don't understand how the council or we could really reach an informed decision about the best way to structure that for all parties, until we know a little bit more about the net costing numbers and what the impact, you know, financially is on all parties concerned. I don't feel like I have enough information to make an informed decision this evening on that. And I would imagine some of the city council members would feel the same way. With respect to the signage, as you might have suspected from the comments I made earlier, I don't know why we need multiple 20-foot-tall signs. I guess what, where I'm, and I'm in the promenade situation, I really would like to address that as a larger-scale issue, not on a one-off basis. So I personally would like to see us just enforce the current code. And that would take care of both of those issues for me.
I just have a suggestion on those signs, and I'm not sure which, where spot I am, but would it be useful to do a quick sightline study to show what those are going to look like from those locations from the roundabout, what height they are, where you see it, how far, those types of things, you know, along both those streets? I mean, I think that might help. I don't know, either way, it would give us some more information on it. And I think part of the question right here tonight is we just don't have necessarily enough information to understand how they end up on those streets.
I certainly feel like I'm not, I have a hard time saying that 20 feet is too big or too small, I mean, without understanding the context better and what's needed. Carrie, in the draft ordinance that would be the new zoning code for this site, there is, in the signage area, there's a freestanding retail, one per entrance, 100 square foot at France, 20 foot tall, 50 square feet at Hazelton Road, 20 foot tall. So the way the ordinance is written would be for a 50-square-foot at Hazelton.
It is, and that's consistent with the existing code requirement.
Underlying signage code requirements. Now, what about the promenade? Which one of those, is that the directional monument?
That's the neighborhood ID sign.
Neighborhood ID sign.
That says promenade and 25 square feet and 75, or...
And seven feet tall. Okay, so those are the ones, those, to the extent the commission has, I mean, I think those are the things we just have to grind through. Commissioner Grable?
That ordinance might make sense, where you've got one main entrance, but because traffic from Hazelton going west can only enter at the roundabout, it seems to me that that makes a different situation than, than, than what, what, it's not, in other words, it's not a secondary entrance. It's the only entrance off of Hazelton, if you're going west, is to use that roundabout, and you'd want to see that sign. Again, I think, you know, you can have one on a big parcel, you can have one 20-foot, 100-square-foot sign. I really don't see what the problem is with this one on Hazelton, particularly when it's going to be behind the roundabout. And again, if you go down France Avenue at Valley View, and you look at that roundabout, they've got to, they've got to reach over at least a 12-foot-high mound in the center of the roundabout. And the reason they have those mounds, I asked Wayne about that one time, why do they have that? You need that so you spend time looking at the traffic coming around the roundabout to make sure you don't hit someone, as opposed to looking down the street. So it's a safety feature to have that mound in the middle of the roundabout.
Learn something new every day.
So, so I support both signs, the way they've proposed it. I think with respect to the, to the promenade sign, I think they ought to have one on the promenade, but I'd be comfortable with a condition on the proposal that, you know, they withhold building that promenade sign until the city does in fact have an opportunity to create a regulation to cover signs facing the promenade and other parkland. So, thank you.
Commissioner Potts?
I want to direct my fellow commissioners to site plan on page A35. I think I'm trying to deal with the requests before us without the water feature and all those issues we've spent a lot of time talking about, because I think that's actually not part of this review. So while you're finding that, I think the pylon signs, I don't have a problem with those. Two of them at 20 feet, I think, is consistent with the scale of this development. So I support them as presented. And additionally, I think in terms of the request before us, I'm in support of that, which would have the park dedication fees paid at the time of building permit issuance. However, I think if the city and the developer, if we can leave some latitude there, where we come to an agreement on the landscaping of this area at the promenade and access to it, then, you know, relative to that building A at least, there could be, you know, some, the cost sharing that would allow the dedication fees to be paid as part of the site development contract work. So I think that, in my mind, that's the thing to really work out. And I guess, again, outside of this proposal, I just have some questions about whether this high point of the site is the place to do a water feature, for a lot of different reasons. But that's a, that's still a city project. So I'm generally in support of this, as staff has outlined it. Oh, that's, sorry. The site plan on page A35 does not show the water feature. It simply shows, you know, it shows a pedestrian connection. It shows a bridge by others. There's a, you know, there's a dash line indicating water feature, but I think it's, I don't think it's specifically described as, as part of the design there. Because I think it's just a suggestion on that. So that, I mean, looking at that, rather than the fully rendered, fully colored site plan, sort of removes a lot of the subjectivity, which is largely a city project, a city landscape project along the promenade, in any case.
Commissioner Platter, how do you feel about the signs, the pylon signs on Hazelton and France?
In general, I'm okay with the council. It would just be nice to see how they relate to the rest of the...
Okay, so you're feeling like there might not be enough information either way to figure it out?
Yeah, I mean, I agree. We need signs, and I don't want to, you know, no signs, but it's, understand how they sit. And then the promenade, leaning towards, you know, some city involvement on what becomes of that versus a particularly branded Byerly's sign here.
Okay. Are there other, Commissioner Forrest?
Thank you for suggesting the walkway on the west side of the water feature. I think it makes it, the whole thing, just much more inviting. And I'm not a big fan of huge monument signs. I think they often are ugly, and I'm always looking beyond them, and I seldom read them. On the other hand, I do understand it's part of the business. I would like, though, if we go forward with this, I would prefer to see that we do not allow the sign on the promenade at this time, and that they work with the city. And if we need to amend this PUD in the future to allow it, that's one thing. But at this point, I'd like to see it go forward without that, so that some thought is really put into that, the signage that goes there.
Chair, Chair Stotson?
Yes, sir.
If it might help the planning commission, there are renderings of both the pylon signs. If you turn to graphic A17 and A19, A19 shows the graphic of the Hazelton pylon sign, to kind of give you an idea of the scale of the sign in comparison to the building.
The one on A19, what is, where is that? That's street level from Hazelton?
Yeah, it's the lower picture.
Oh, that's the right in, right out. That's the, oh, and then, I see, on the very left-hand side of it is the 20-foot-tall one. Okay.
Can you just help me pull this up? Help me pull this up on the screen. If you'll see the structure of the building here and the 20-foot height, the cap on the retail level is probably at about 18 to 19 feet. The 16, I'm sorry, 16 to the parapet. So the, the height of that sign is then just about four feet max over the height of the parapet on the residential building C structure. So it isn't exactly the sightline you were looking for, but it's the best we've got tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner Kerr?
For the reasons I've stated before, actually, I'm in favor of it exactly as recommended by the staff, approving this with the staff recommendations. Although I would recommend to the applicant that if you go to the city council and you wish to defer some of the park fees, I would recommend that you go with the value of the easement and the value of the work that you're going to be doing, so they can make an informed decision. Thank you.
It sounded really almost like a motion. What do you think? Want to turn it into a motion?
Yeah.
All right, let's do that. Unless there's...
I'll second.
Well, we do everything a little differently here. Why not do a second before the motion?
No, I make a motion, we approve the final zoning, the final development plan, and the final plat, subject to the conditions outlined by the staff.
And Commissioner Grable is seconding that?
Aye.
All right. Discussion. Commissioner Shearer?
I wonder if Commissioner Grable would like to add a friendly condition that he mentioned a few moments ago regarding the promenade signage differing to the city's planning regarding that.
Well, since I seconded the motion, I'm not really in a position to amend, propose amendment, but...
I believe you and the proposer could.
Yeah. So is that an acceptable amendment, amendment to the secondor and to the mover?
That, that the promenade sign be held in advance until the city has taken action to regulate signs along the promenade and other park areas, is that...
Yes.
That would be acceptable to me as a secondor, if the mover would be okay with that. I don't know.
I would, I don't disagree with the concept of it. I don't know whether we want to require the city to adopt an ordinance on this necessarily. I don't know if that's the only way of dealing with this. Carrie, I don't know if you can address that?
That sounds as though that's kind of the motion that you're leaning toward. And that is quite an undertaking that'll, that would add to your, your work plan, a zoning ordinance amendment that regulates signage facing parks. That's a pretty, that's a big issue.
How about if it was just subject to the approval of the city? We're done in cooperation with the city.
What does that mean?
I mean, I hear the conversation that we've been having is, let's make sure the design, the aesthetics of the sign, both its size and its appearance, are consistent with what we're doing, how we want to have it on the promenade, in our, you know, as the city's kind of, as custodian of the promenade. Commissioner Forrest?
That's why I'd like to see it go forward in compliance with our current ordinance as far as the promenade goes, that there's no signage on the promenade for the PUD at this time. And then they can work with the city and come forward to amend the PUD to allow that later, perhaps. Does that work, Carrie, procedurally?
That would work.
But I don't know that they, what if they don't want to put a sign? I mean, we're talking about a sign. By that time, they'll have their PUD, why would they want to put a sign there?
Well, maybe, oh, because that's how they get their customers in, that's why they'd want to do it.
All right.
What you could, right now, the ordinance just establishes parameters for size and height. You could add a condition that the look of the sign be in coordination with staff signage along the promenade, or working with staff in regard to uniform signage along the promenade. And you might want to consider that seven-foot height, if you were uncomfortable with that.
Well, I, as I indicated, I don't believe the current, the original proposal, I think it was too restrictive to require us to adopt an ordinance. But I do, I wouldn't have a problem necessarily, although I do want to remind everyone, we wanted to encourage pedestrians to go into this development area. And so without a sign, I think that there's less incentive. People are not going to, maybe, they'll just walk by it, they won't see that. They'll think it's a sidewalk into the apartment complex, and they won't go up there. So, and I'm talking myself out of agreeing to that amendment.
Very good. So, and, and you know, one of the great things about this is the council will have a chance to hear all this, and it's not like the issue won't be flagged for them. So that, that amendment is not acceptable to the mover. Is there any, would an amendment be acceptable to the mover and the secondor with respect to negotiation of the timing of the park dedication fee payments on building A? Because it currently, as the staff recommends it, they're to be paid at the time of the building permit. Mr. Voss explained the rationale for, at least with building A, delaying the payment until certificate of occupancy, so that there would be a negotiation about the participation as that is developed. Personally, I'm comfortable with that, so long as it doesn't delay construction of the improvements in the, in the promenade. But if that's not acceptable to the mover, we can move on without that.
Again, I don't have a problem conceptually with deferring some of the park dedication fees, but I do think we do need to know what the value of the easement is, because that's going to be deducted from the fees, and also the value of the construction work, because that will also be deducted from the fees.
That was exactly what I was proposing you make as an amendment to your.
Well, no, but I'm not quite sure I understand the amendment. Again, the, the proposal of the staff is the way it is. And again, I, my recommendation really would be, is to have the applicant go to the city council with those details and their request for a proposal on the park dedication fees and deferral, and let the city council decide that issue, because they will have more information at their meeting. Because it actually behooves the applicant to present that information to the city council.
Okay. So, the motion stands as it was stated without the amendments that we have been contemplating. Is there further discussion on the motion?
Sure.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Real quickly, I, the one thing I'm not going to do is fall on my sword over this. I've been supportive of the Barley's project from the beginning. I just have these seeming knits with some aspects of it, and the signage is one of them. But I, I just wanted to express that at the outset here. I think that the council knows or will know what everybody's leanings are. And so, from my perspective, I'm going to support moving forward. I'd vote in favor of it, recognizing that I've had some concerns, and, and those haven't disappeared, but they're going to have to get kicked upstairs.
Commissioner Grable.
Yeah, I want to speak in favor of this proposal. I, I recall, and I don't know who all was on the commission at the time, but the first development that we had along the promenade was the Target Store. And we had a lot of discussion and a lot of, well, it turned out to be a lot of hope, as far as how the promenade face of the Target Store would turn out. And it didn't turn out that, to meet the commission's hopes. This project, however, is very inviting along the promenade. It's got residential along the promenade. It may have a sign inviting people to retail along the promenade. And I just think it's a great, a great proposal, and I'm looking forward to seeing this thing come to fruition.
I'm not also going to fall on my sword, although I share every one of your concerns, Commissioner Carpenter. And I am, it will be with some disappointment that I vote yes, because I, I really do think that the signage, the size and scope of it, how we continue to develop the promenade, and how we sort of shepherd that resource, is really critical. And I, I think that it wouldn't harm us at all to have further discussion about how we want that to operate, and not, not do this on a one-off basis, case by case. But I will vote yes for the overall project.
All right. Hearing, hearing no further discussion, I call for the vote. All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. And the motion passes. Congratulations. And thank you for your times and time and effort. Next up is item six C, site plan review. Brian Lubin, Walker and Associates, Fairview Southdale Hospital, sixty-four oh one, France Avenue in Edina. Carrie, you're going to introduce this?
Thank you, Chair, members of the commission. Before you was a site plan review with variances for an expansion to the Southdale Fairview Hospital. I think you're all familiar with the site on France Avenue and the crosstown. Property is owned regional medical and guided in our comprehensive plan for regional medical uses. Maximum height in this area is up to twelve stories. What the applicant is proposing is to build a two-level, just under eighty-nine thousand square foot, emergency and urgent care center that would be located toward crosstown. This is, the upper picture is a look at the existing hospital, and the rendering below shows the proposed new emergency and urgent care center. Again, here's crosstown down below it. Couple other renderings. Again, the applicant will go through this with their materials board in more detail. The, the height of the structure is thirty-two feet, so well within our code limits for height. So this is an overall site plan that shows the entire site, the parking ramp over on the east side, gives you an indication of where that addition would be located, right here. So the request before the planning commission is a site plan review, a drive aisle setback variance from twenty feet to six to ten feet, and I'll show you where that's located in a minute, and a parking stall variance from just over twenty-seven hundred spaces to just over two thousand spaces. The variances requested, again, here's the addition, and they're, they would be constructing a new, a new drive aisle around the facility. The existing heliport would be relocated onto the site, or on top of, of the building, in this location here. So the, the variances that are requested here, with the, with any drive aisle or parking lot, you need a twenty-foot setback from a, a street property line. So they're proposing six feet in this location, and then the drive aisle would be ten feet. WSB has conducted a traffic study. Chuck Rickert is with us here this morning, or this morning, this evening.
Almost seems like it.
Let's hope it doesn't get there. And he's concluded that the existing parking ramps can support the addition and the existing uses in the hospital, and that the existing roadways can support this project. As a typical condition that we've required with any development in this area is that at some point in the future, there's going to be some improvements that are going to be needed at the sixty-fifth and France intersection. So as part of this request, the applicant would have to pay their fair share of whatever those improvements may be. That would, that's suggested as a condition of approval. Landscaping that's proposed around the, the site are existing and proposed, based on the perimeter of the site, eighty-five over-story trees are required. There's about a, over a hundred and fifty that are existing and proposed on the site, so well within our, within our code requirements. In regard to the variances and the variance criteria, staff believes that the variance criteria is met, first looking at the, the parking setback. Practical difficulties in this situation is the location on a, on a freeway. And also, there is quite a large area of green space that separates this. Kind of difficult to see here, but this is the lot line here, kind of this dashed line. And so between the paved surface and the freeway on-ramp, there's forty feet of green space, so there's a good, a good chunk of green space that's going to separate this. That's the intent of the ordinance in itself, is to provide adequate green space. The, the hospital in this area here is elevated up from the crosstown, so this encroachment into that required setback won't even be visible from the crosstown itself. There's also a chain link fence that separates the use between here, and obviously, there's no access available to the crosstown from that location. Back, in regard to the parking variance, back in two thousand, when the hospital expanded, there weren't parking variances granted at that time. Rather, there was a parking study done that just simply indicated that the parking provided for the expansion was enough to, to support that addition. Over time, that's proved to be true, as parking hasn't been a, a problem here. We are calling out that variance specifically this time, however. So in conclusion, staff believes that the request is reasonable. The use is permitted. The building setbacks are all met here. Again, the addition would be supported by the existing roadways. So with that, staff would recommend approval, subject to the findings and conditions that are outlined in your staff report.
Thank you, Carrie. On the parking, you said that there was a, the previous, when was the previous expansion?
In two thousand.
In two thousand. And I seem to recall, it must be with an adjacent property, there was a proof of parking on a ramp at some point?
Yeah, it's my understanding that west ramp, there's an ability to go up.
Okay.
Two or three levels, perhaps, someone in the development team can verify that.
And I just wondered if that was something that we, you know, sometimes we've talked about proof of parking before. Is there a reason that staff doesn't, didn't make that a recommendation?
Yeah, I didn't see that in the conditions of approval.
From the last time?
From the last time, right.
And you didn't think it was necessary for this time?
I didn't, not according to the, the traffic study, the parking study.
Commissioner Grable.
Carrie, and maybe Wayne can weigh in on this as well. I, I, I see from your explanation that there is quite a distance between the proposed driveway and the on-ramp and the freeway. Would the state require any kind of screening along there for headlights and that type of thing, or is there enough room with the, if we granted this?
Commissioner Grable, I don't, I don't believe that they would require that. We can ask that question, though, to, to be sure that, that if anybody's traveling around the roundabout, that, that they would not blind that somebody coming onto the freeway.
The plans were sent to MNDOT for their review. I haven't received feedback, back from them as of yet. This is, this does sit quite a bit higher than the crosstown itself.
Commissioner Platterter, I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner Grable.
It could.
Commissioner Platterter.
Two, two comments. And one of them was about the freeway. I guess we could, there, to our knowledge, there's no expansion plans for that freeway, or widening or anything that would come into play for this.
There, to, to my knowledge, there is no expansion plans. Actually, the, what do you call this, South Hennepin Public Works and City Engineers Group has been talking about how do we get that going. It's probably a twenty to thirty-year endeavor. We, we did submit for SIMS funding for, for the, the bridge over, over the crosstown, just actually not to redo the bridge, but actually do, to do a different lane alignment, to make it a safer interchange. We're going to find out probably mid-June to end of June if we're successful on that funding.
So this, this, you don't believe would impact any of those, how they're kind of tucking up to the, the freeway, there's still the needed room on the freeway side?
No, I don't believe there, there would be. I believe that, that there's a big enough median to actually add a, a lane in each direction, is what I understand, along the crosstown.
Just curious. And the other thing, it was actually on the proof of parking, and I understand the traffic studies, but how many square feet are you adding here for total for the project?
Just under eighty-nine thousand square feet.
Yeah, and we're not adding any parking. Just on the face of it, that seems a little suspect, so I, you know, not that I'm, not that, I'm not advocating for a lot of parking either, but what, what, what is, what is the city's recourse, if anything, if, if somehow this is, this is incorrect, and some other things happening? That, that's a huge amount of square footage to add, that it just, every other project I've ever been associated with, we're always adding parking because of that, as square footage, so.
Well, let's talk with the applicant about that.
Yeah, maybe, maybe that's part of it. So those are my, my two comments.
Commissioner Carpenter and then Commissioner Potts, welcome back.
Carrie, do we know exactly where the right-of-way ends for the highway?
Yeah, it's, it's this line here, and then it jogs in. It's represented in the, the dashed line.
And so, on the, on the, on the, not on the highway side, but on the side that, that approaches the roundabout, what, what exactly is the, the number of feet then from the right-of-way to the, to the roundabout? Is that that six feet?
That's the six-foot number.
Okay.
Six feet in this location and ten feet in this location here.
Okay.
And then there's a forty-foot separation between the paved surface here and the paved surface.
All right.
For the, for the on-ramp.
Commissioner Potts.
Carrie, does the parking space count on-site include the ramp connected by Skyway?
It does.
Thanks.
Commissioner Kerr.
On your diagram, where is the ambulance entrance? Do you know? I was just, the reason I ask that is just because I'm assuming that'll have some impact on traffic flow, and I, I know where the current ambulance entrance is, but I was wondering where it is on this proposal.
I'll have to let the applicant point out the details of, of how that.
Okay, because that might impact traffic. I'm just wondering how that will work. And then also, you talked about landscaping, how there's more trees. Proposed landscape plan exceeds the city's requirements. And you're, when you say the perimeter of the site, you're talking about the new building location or the new addition? Is that, what do you mean by the site?
The entire site. So it's the entire hospital site.
Okay.
So the entire perimeter of the property, east of France.
Okay, are they, and are they adding any additional landscaping for this addition?
Yeah, the landscaping that's added would be in and around the improvement areas here. Within the roundabout, there's some landscaping along here, and I believe some along this area here.
L one hundred in this.
Yeah, okay. So the landscaping is for the, when you look at the landscaping proposal for the site plan, you look at it for the entire site, not for just the addition?
Correct.
Okay. And then one other issue, which I'm assuming would come up later on, is signage. Since it's an emergency entrance, I'm imagining there's going to be some signs, but that'll be at a later stage?
Yeah, we're under the assumption that they would meet the code requirements for signage. They haven't indicated to us any need for variances, although the hospital has received several variances for signage in the past.
No.
No twenty-foot signs, though, apparently?
No twenty-footers that I'm aware of.
And they're not within seventy-five feet of a water body? Commissioner Forrest.
Could you point out one more time where those variances are for me, please?
So the six-foot measurement is, is right at the end of the roundabout.
Right there.
Right here. And then the drive aisle along here, that setback is about ten feet.
I'm asking because it's a different, different numbers in, in the applicant's narratives. I was just wanting to.
It is, and I'm, I'm taking the numbers off of the large-scale plans.
This is the real one.
Right.
Good, thanks.
All right. Thank you, Carrie. If the applicant could come forward and tell us about their proposal. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Rob Grooman. I am the Vice President of Facilities and Operations for Fairview Southdale Hospital. In keeping with the theme tonight, we brought our own student, although in this case, they're not writing that eleventh-hour paper. They're actually here working on their Eagle Scout badge, so.
And you have a father of one of the students in the crowd as well?
I'm sorry?
You have a father of one of the previous students here as well.
We do.
Maybe he can be a second family member to testify.
We're covering all of our bases here tonight, absolutely. So, one, one way or the other, we're going to cover every spectrum. So, my residence, I live at forty-two oh five Duke Drive in Minnetonka. However, I work at Fairview Southdale Hospital, which is sixty-four oh one, France Avenue South. Before I introduce our team, who will speak to the project tonight, I want to thank the commission for hearing our application. Also want to thank Planner Teague and Director Huell for working with us on a lot of our project initiatives so far, and they've been great, as well as the planning department, and as well as the fire department, and talking about the fire, or the ambulance garage and that sort of thing. Our team, many of whom are here tonight, who will be presenting, HGA is our architect. Our engineers are Dunham. Our project manager and owner's rep is Walker and Associates. Our construction manager will be Knutson Construction Services. And then there's a whole slew of people from the ER team and the ER physicians who have been engaged in the planning process so far. I'd actually like to turn the meeting over right now to, or the presentation over to HGA, who will come and share with, with you the plans and the finishes on the exteriors. Brian Lubin from Walker and Associates will come and address some of your questions on the two variances that we're asking for, both on the parking and the setback. And then one of my colleagues, Russ Williams, who is the Vice President of Operations, who has the ER responsibility, is going to come and talk to you a little bit about our business purpose and what we're trying to achieve here. So with that, I'd like my colleagues from HGA to come up, and they'll introduce themselves and share with you both plans and finishes.
Thank you, Mr. Grooman.
Hello, I'm Vicki Hooper. I'm with HGA. I'm the project manager of the project, address thirty-five thirty-seven Gerard Avenue South in Minneapolis.
Good evening. My name is Amy Dalma, and I-
My name is Amy Dalma, and I reside at 53 Forest Dale Road in Minneapolis, and I'm the project designer for this project.
Welcome.
I'll just give you a quick overview of the project. As Planner Teague described the project is, the addition to the ED to the north of the existing hospital out toward the crosstown. Total project is about 88,000, a little, little under 89,000. The primary program, the expansion of the ED, is on the main level, of course. That main level is about 40,000 square feet. Above that is the, is an observation area of about 20,000 square feet. Day one, it'll open with 18 observation rooms with the possibility to expand to 24. And then on the lower level, there's a basement level, 28,000 square feet, with mostly offices, administration area, and mechanical electrical rooms. I think Amy will talk a little bit more, 'cause we can explain, the existing ambulance garage is being made into an entry, and the new ambulance garage is farther over to the west, and I think Amy will talk a little bit about how that circulation works, 'cause we feel that this, the roundabout and that circulation really helps clean up the pedestrian circulation and the vehicular circulation, making it much more safe.
So, looking at some of the diagrams that we brought tonight, these are possibly enhancements from what you received in your package. Can you zoom in just a little bit on the, on the diagrams? So, we are proposing, an addition on the north side of the building. You can see that the primary circulation goes around a rotary that we are proposing also on the north side, and one of the reasons for the rotary is that we need to accommodate both a new entry for this expansion, as well as an entry for the existing MOB that exists on the site. And so, given the constraints of the site, that was the best solution to do that and still provide access to all locations. There was some question about the ambulance garage earlier, that is located on the west portion, so.
I'm sorry, if I can get you to slide the picture, we're only getting some of it, maybe down and over, so we can get the whole.
Yep, yep.
And actually, if you pull it even down further, we can get a little better zoom, and we can.
Okay.
I think it's really a helpful graphic, so I don't want to miss it.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. So, this is the proposed ambulance garage area. There is both an indoor and an outdoor. The ambulances turn as they go into the building, and so the indoor is located on the far west side where the ambulance is indicated on this diagram. The exit is located here. The existing ambulance garage is located on this end of the building, and as Vicki indicated, it is becoming a new east entry from the parking ramp that is located east of the site. It is anticipated right now that ambulances primarily will come in the same direction they come now, and so they would actually come in the east side of the building and go around the site, and then come into the ambulance garage on this side, so there would be no significant change from the existing circulation. So just some other views of the building. We are proposing that is, it is primarily composed of glass and metal panel, and the idea with the massing and the form is to try to reflect the existing forms of the existing hospital, and yet give them a new face. You can see that we are, you know, it is similar to some of the existing forms, but we're trying to use new materials that make it a bit more contemporary. It does have a lot of prominence on Highway 62, and so this will be the primary focal point of the facility from this side of the building going forward. And just a couple of other views. This view is taken from France, the intersection of France and 62, as you go over Highway 62, so it will be visible from that intersection. And then this is a view taken as you traverse the site. This is taken from the rotary, looking back at the building. So with this, I think we will walk through some of the materials. And so the diagrams at the top were included in the packet that was sent earlier. The primary material on the front is the glass, as I indicated earlier, and that is comprised of three different types of glass. There will be some clear glass, as indicated by the GL1 indication on your drawings, and then most of the glass is actually a translucent pattern, and that was done primarily for privacy for the patients. So it is a combination of those two glass types, and there are two different translucencies, hence the total number of three. The upper level is comprised of metal panel, and so we have two different kinds of metal panel. The first is the greenish-to-purple color that you see in the front on the rendering, and that is what they call a color shift paint, and so it actually will appear different in different sunlight conditions over the course of the day. And so it has quite a number of colors in it, but the primary colors are a green and sort of a blue-purple color. And then on the backside of the building, there is a link that connects back to the existing second floor, and then also a stair tower on the east end, that will be comprised of a more simple silver metal panel, as indicated by MP2. Other materials include cast stone. That is the primary material for the ambulance garage, indicated on the east side. And then there is a little bit of textured rough stone on the side as well. The low wall that you see in front of the glass wall is comprised of a veneer of this stone placed over top of a concrete backer wall. So, any questions about the materials? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman Stoudam, members of the Commission. My name is Brian Lubin. I'm a project manager with Walker and Associates. I just wanted to say a couple of things about the variances that we're proposing. There's two variances we're asking for, for the project. The first is a setback variance, which Carrie explained. The reason for that variance is so that we can get the proper turning radius on that roundabout to let the fire equipment, ambulances, everyone kind of pass easily around that circle, and so that's the reason for kind of crowding that toward crosstown a bit. And as Carrie said, we're about six feet from the curve to our property line at that point, and then as you get toward the straight driveway section, that's about 10 feet off of the property line. The second variance we're asking for is a parking variance. We did a lot of research as we looked at how much parking we need for the current condition, how much we might need in the future. Fairview folks keep very close records of who enters the parking, who leaves the parking, and there's a system for recording that. As we got to looking at that, the average daily peak that we came up with is just short of about 1,500 spaces that are used. The highest peak that we could find, as we went back, is just short of about 1,700 spaces. Currently, there's 20, or, excuse me, 2,051 spaces available. So at our average peak, we're about 37% below capacity, and at the highest peak that we can find, we're about 21% below capacity. The new space we're building here for this project is really an expansion of an existing use within the hospital. It's an expansion of a really overcrowded ED department that's, really needs the space, so the use will expand. Certainly, the, the visits and the staff for that area will increase, but only incrementally. We don't expect a huge bump in the amount of parking required for that. The parking study that was done by Mr. Rickert, you know, bears that out as well. I think he looked at a situation where we might add up to 150 additional employees, and I think Mr. Beard and Mr. Williams here would probably faint dead away if they thought we were gonna add 150 more employees to the, to the roster, but they may wish to speak on that, too, and I'll pass it back to them for some comments on the variance.
Thank you, Mr. Lubin.
Good evening. My name is Russ Williams, Vice President of Operations at Fairview Southdale Hospital. I live at 3614 Molly Lane Woodbury, but spend a fair amount of my time at 6401 France Avenue. From a business case standpoint, I hope you all agree that a highly, a high-quality and high-accessibility emergency department is a critical resource for any thriving community. The current emergency department of Fairview Southdale Hospital was built to see around 30,000 patients on an annual basis. Last year, we saw just shy of 43,000 patients in that space. With a growing and aging population in this service area, it's critical that we continue to match the capacity with the demand and the needs of the market. With this project, we planned not only to expand the overall size of the department, but to more appropriately a size, to size the rooms in the department and also lay the department out to meet not only the current, but also the future needs that we will have within the healthcare setting. Healthcare continues to change, and the space continued, needs to change with it as well, and so building in the larger rooms to accommodate the appropriate technology and other needs that we have, and also to allow future flexibility, is critical for what we do. Within the current department, we do provide absolutely outstanding care. There was a recent study done of 5,000 hospitals nationwide, and the emergency department of Fairview Southdale was found to be in the top 5% of those 5,000 hospitals from a quality of care standpoint. The city of Edina has the best cardiac event survivorship in the entire country. What that means is if you have a heart attack in the city of Edina, you are more likely to survive than in any other city in the country. And that not only speaks to the phenomenal doctors and nurses and team that we have at the hospital, but also the great partnership that we have with Edina Fire and the rest of the EMS committee as well. The satisfaction with our emergency physicians and nurses is in the top quartile nationally and continues to improve. We're a primary stroke center, as dedicated by the Joint Commission, and have fantastic outcomes in stroke. And last, we were recently listed in AARP as one of only three hospitals in the state of Minnesota to achieve the highest patient safety rating possible. So again, to close, the community needs and deserves a new and expanded emergency department. It'll allow us to provide even better care, an even better experience, and will allow us to accommodate not only the current, but the future, emergency care and other unscheduled ambulatory care needs, not only now, but well into the future for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
And we're happy to answer any questions that the Commission may have.
So I have one to start, just going to the site plan, and I'll, Carrie, if you can put that up, just that general site plan, it's page C300 on the plans. I just want to get, yeah, it's up there on the screen, look, the one, this two back. Well, actually, that one's fine. You can do the one with the addition. So, Mr. Grooman, what I'm trying to make sure I understand is, can you just kind of walk us through where the ambulances go and where the emergency entrance is now, and where it will be once you're finished, and what the circulation kind of changes are?
I can, is a son. All right. Today, all of our ambulance vehicles, whether they're coming from whichever direction, enter the hospital grounds right here. They come up this direction right here like this. The current ambulance garage is right on the end of the, of the corner of the property right, the corner of the hospital right there. They come in a door that is right about here, and they line up inside, and then as they exit, they leave the doors that are right here, and then they exit the property again, back out on Drew. Vast majority of them probably go out on 65th and either get on France.
And then, on an interior perspective, what portion of the building is dedicated to the emergency department?
The emergency department today is sort of about right here, down to about right here like this, so it's just this corner of it right here.
And so will that continue to be part of the emergency department, just be expanded into the addition?
It, it will not.
Okay.
It is conceivable at some point in time, if we need to expand our emergency department, we may do so by coming into an area right here, which is part of the existing ER, but the current project stops right at this red line right here.
And, and is.
So our intent is, I'm sorry?
Go ahead. So, so the red outline is really what's intended to be the new emergency department?
Correct. And, and one of the benefits here is that we will be able to construct this entirely, this entire new area while this ER is fully operative, and then we will move into this space. And then the majority of this space, right now, we have a couple of tentative plans. We're gonna keep this corner right here free. That's not part of this project, but we're gonna keep part of this corner free in case we need to expand our ER in the future.
And then just for, I've been thinking, especially people who are watching, if you can then show kind of, under what you're proposing, where the ambulances would go under the proposed?
The ambulance will, ambulances will all continue to, oops, that last one occurred, there it is. Will all continue to still come in on Drew Avenue right here. They will come up here, and rather than going into the garage here, they will come up, take the roundabout, come in here, and they will come in the garage essentially here, and go through the garage. Anyway, they'd come in on this side right here, go through the garage, and then exit out here, come back on this property and come out the same way they do today. It's just a little bit longer trip.
And then the red outline is essentially where the emergency department would be?
Correct. And the garage, the new garage is in this area right here.
Okay.
And we just recently expanded the size of that in concert with some of the work we've done with Marty Shear and his folks.
So then, from, so if it's not by ambulance, if, if I'm bringing someone in, where do I park, and where, where do I drop them off, and how does all that work?
All right. The vast majority of people today come in the site this way to our emergency department, and they drop them off either at this door, or occasionally, a very few who have somebody in a car do in fact come into the garage here, but that's sort of the exception. So most people are dropping up people off by way of car, under a canopy that's right here on the end of the building. So now there will be a little bit longer trip, but they will come in here, roundabout, and they will drop them right at that place right there. We have a new canopy that will, under which we can actually have three cars there, but they will come under the canopy, and that will be, this will be the primary pedestrian entrance to the ER at that point right there.
And then, and then, to the extent, if someone drops them off, then where do they, they go to the ramp to park then?
Yes, and that's exactly what they do today, is they would drop them off here, come into the ramp right here, they'll just come right back down here and go into the ramp.
Okay. All right, well, thank you for that overview.
Sure.
All right, other questions? Commissioner Carr.
Along those same lines, if you are parking, right now you have to cross over the, the street there. Is there gonna be the same crossover spot, or is it gonna be moved, and have you taken into account safety considerations of the pedestrians?
One of the things, one of the things that happens today is that there is a crosswalk that is labeled here, in the current, maybe it's actually right about here. Today, there's a crosswalk that's marked on the street, and this is the vast majority of people who do come and park, and by the way, a number of spots right here in this part of the parking ramp on the first level are designated for emergency patients only, so they get, they're able to get right in and park here, and then get back out and get in. Today, we will actually create a similar kind of crosswalk, but I believe it's our intent to actually have that a totally different material, but they'll come in, and they'll come in, they'll come across this crosswalk right here, they'll come into the building at that point, come back down, and this site plan doesn't show the interiors, but there is basically a corridor, a portion of which is the ambulance garage that exists today, and they'll come into the space and come to the reception desk, which will be right here in this location. This area today, over the last couple of years, to provide additional safety, we have put lighting there, so whenever it's dark, we've got lots of good lighting, but there is a certain amount of pedestrian and vehicular traffic at this point in place that will not necessarily change, because you'll still have people coming across that crosswalk.
Commissioner Forrest.
Okay, continuing to look at this from a user perspective, what percentage of your ER visits come in by ambulance compared to walk, being driven there, walk-ins, so to speak?
I want to make sure we have the answer to that correctly. Russ, do you know, or, Red, can you, do we know the answer to that?
It's roughly one quarter of our business that comes in via ambulance.
Okay. As I thought it was, it would probably be more people coming in by private vehicle, and so I kind of share these concerns as far as, as, has, having been there before, the parking is not clear to me, the routes through in and out aren't clear to me, and I think this will really help with that, but the parking is, is quite a distance, and when you have a, you bring in a loved one, and you're trying to keep tabs on them, or you need to provide information to the intake people, and then, but meanwhile, you have to walk about a block to, to park your car at the very minimum. That's a little bit tough, that there's no temporary ER parking, enough of it, you know, more than just, you know, one or two spaces, I guess, right there would be nice.
I understand your concern entirely. A couple of things as relates to that is that. A couple of things as relates to that is that at this, oops, I keep losing the cursor, sorry. At this location, when we opened this up, just a while, just within the last year and a half, on this side of the hospital over here, at this entrance, we just recently started a valet service, and we're actually looking at the possibility of doing that here. Right now, we're going through the financial feasibility of making that work. We think that's a good solution for patients coming to this location. And then, there also is, I'm sorry, I keep, there it is. There are a couple of spaces right along here, some of which will be handicap, but there is a possibility that some people will be able to park here. We're going to have to figure out a way to help monitor that, so people don't use those spots, except for emergency parking, so.
Yeah, I mean, it seems somewhat minimal to me, so that's my concern. And also, coming in there in a rush, valet service seems a little bit unrealistic. It works well for, for doctor visits, follow-ups, and things like that. It seems like, for me, better. But the other question is, what's, is that the same entrance you'll be using for your urgent care? And where are those people supposed to park in the ramp as well?
We will be. That'll be the same entrance that we'll be using for urgent care. As a matter of fact, one of the beneficial concepts behind this new addition is that basically we'll bring, be bringing urgent care, which is today located down in this part of the hospital, and our emergency department is located down in this part of the hospital. These two actually today function independently. In this location, they'll function as one. So as a patient, you would come in here, and you would be seen at the front desk by triage individuals, and you would be then directed either into the urgent care, or excuse me, into the emergency care, if that was the, the degree of severity of your issues, or you would be able to go right into urgent care. So we would get you directed to the most efficient and most cost-effective treatment to take care of whatever your concerns were.
That makes a lot of sense to me. I like that, but I'm concerned too, because there was mention of expanding hours into daytime hours more so for urgent care, and I think it was in your narrative. And once again, if you're coming in with a small child, you park, like the fact, at least there's an indoor corridor to get down there, then, then you're talking about perhaps more in daytime congestion and parking issues as it is. It's really, for me anyway, because I don't go over there often, when I have had to go there, it's been confusing as to where do I park? Even to pick up a friend is, you know, seeing a doctor in the other building, it's kind of like, where can I stop? I can't even tell. So that, those are kind of my concerns, have to do with circulation and, and parking. It's not so much the numbers, it's where it's at and how it relates to how people use the facility.
All right. Noted. Thank you.
Commissioner Shear.
Just a couple of quick questions. I assume that if urgent care moves over there, will same-day surgery stay where it is now?
It will.
Okay. So there could still be valet parking for those people?
Correct.
Which I think is an effective use of that space.
Right.
Another, just to clarify, the 2051 parking spaces that you're proposing to retain, I want to make sure I understand this. Those are comprised of the ground, the few ground-level spots that you have scattered around, the ramp that is in this-
Right here.
And, and the 65th Street ramp?
And the ramp that is over here.
Okay. So it's all three?
Right.
All right.
That's the total, right. And as Brian Lubin mentioned, we, we keep very extensive parking records, and we watch that all the time, because we're in the customer service business, and it's important for us to make sure that there's adequate parking on site for all of our customers. And our peak at the highest, and we went back quite a ways in our records, the highest number we ever found was 1,690, I think, was the highest number, 1,689 or something like that, out of the total 2,000-plus that we have on site right here. And that includes all of our, that number, that high number includes the physicians on site at any given time, our staff on site, and our guests, and anybody else who might be working on site, like workmen and repair folks.
And, and people attending the medical office buildings adjacent to your site as well?
Absolutely. All the people that actually office in this building right here, which is the 6363 France Avenue Building. They're, the people who office there as well as their patients and customers. And then, what's the, this is the 2,000 expansion that we referred to a little bit earlier. That includes all of those people as well, including the physicians who office there and their patients that come there on a daily basis.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Commissioner Platter.
Just to tack on Commissioner Forrest's point a little bit about parking right around that area, I, so I'm just curious, what's, what's driving the requirement for the handicap right at that point? I mean, assuming you have handicap stalls throughout the site, site, actually to, just to the west there, what, what, what's driving that? Are you, are you adding those, or do they exist today, or are you being-
I mean, are you talking about these right here?
Correct.
Yeah.
Versus, versus ER parking?
Right now, we show them on there as handicap. We have, without those spots right there, we have a combination of here and some other spots along the front of the building here, and in this parking ramp. We're far in excess of the handicap parking requirements on site. Obviously, we're a hospital-
Right.
We have to deal with that situation. We had tentatively talked about this as being partially handicap and partially ER parking, and I don't know that we have finalized that at the moment. We show them right now as almost all of those being handicap, but I don't know that we've actually locked in on the final plan.
Yeah, just, you know, I'm assuming for overall site, you're fine. I was just curious what would drive them that many in that spot versus having the concern of only a few stalls, or a few spots as, as you come up to the ER? Because, you know, I mean, this must happen all the time, people come up and jump in and, or run in, and there are cars there, right? So you're-
We, we can-
To me, the more you can, that you can put there for general use, for, well, ER use, of course, I think the, the better off you are, and you're, you know, hopefully nothing in the roundabout gets, starts getting blocked or anything there with that as well.
I think that's a fair challenge, and we'll take a look at that. As I said, even if we did not have all those handicapped stalls right there, we're still far in excess of the handicap requirements.
Right. And so, I'm, I'm kind of, you know, looking at use of that area versus the rest of it.
That's a fair challenge. Yeah.
Commissioner Potts.
I'm working to get my arms around the, the scale of this addition compared to what's there, and then the ripple effect on parking and also on traffic. So it looks like you're adding roughly 15% floor area, going from about 600,000 square feet to 690, more or less.
More or less, yes.
And the, the traffic study's based on that with no new parking spots. You also noted you're, you're quite comfortable. You consider it a remote possibility that you'd have to add to the parking? Is that-
That, that's clearly our current position, yes.
Okay. And if you did, it would be to the Skyway Connected Ramp west of France?
Yes. This ramp over here, when it was constructed, there is structure that would support, I believe it's two and possibly three. David, is, is it two, or is it three? So we actually could put three more levels on top of that. It's, it's possible to do that from a structural standpoint. There are some other issues, cost not being, not the least of which, but there were some issues about height restrictions over there relative to concerns of some of the residential folks over there. We'd have to address that at that point in time, but it is possible to do that.
Sure.
I might add that, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I might add that-
Oh, go ahead.
I, I don't, I'm not familiar with any proof of parking requirement at the moment on our site. I believe there is a proof of parking on adjacent property, but not, not on our existing site. At least, I'm not aware of any, any provision in any previous document about a proof of parking. Is that, is that your understanding too? Director Teague?
Yeah. In my review of the files, I couldn't find any requirement for-
I think it might be the, the site to the south across 65th Street.
Yeah, I just wanted to clear that up, as related to our project and our site.
Okay. And so, then, the, the last question is, if, if we needed to add to that parking ramp on the west, does that materially change the traffic counts? You know, currently, you're adding none, no parking, and it seems like a minimal change in the level of service being provided. Once you start adding spots based on demand, does the traffic study show any change, or do you have a sense of that? That's somewhat speculative, I know.
I don't think we saw that in the traffic study. There was no indication of that. Believe me, I believe that we would probably start adding spaces before any kind of numerical thing drives that, based on our customer service requirements. We would hear about that from our patients, and we hear about it from our doctors and our employees.
Sure.
Probably long before any kind of formula would kick in. And I don't mean to sound trade about that, but-
Oh, no, I, I understand. Yeah, the, the way we think about parking through, through the traffic engineering is different than you do as a health service provider.
Absolutely.
The other unique aspect of, of a hospital is the 24/7 nature. Especially with an emergency department, a majority of our volumes come in the evening and weekend hours, as opposed to kind of regular day hours. So a lot of that can also fluctuate, which allows us to use the capacity in a different manner than an office building would, you know, Monday through Friday, eight to five.
Commissioner Carr.
I just wanted to comment, I think the valet service would be wonderful. I've been to the hospital many times with my mother, and it's like, oh, no, I have to go park, something, you know, I have to leave her by herself. So it's like, I think that's a great idea. Just talking a little bit about landscaping, you know, there, I guess one thing about maybe that hospital, there isn't much landscaping there. At least, I don't recall seeing a lot of it. You know, you go to Woodlands and Woodbury, and it's so peaceful, they have all the beautiful trees and everything. So, you know, I just encourage you to think about landscaping as much as you can. I think it'll improve the site. And then, interestingly enough, when you said observation level, I was thinking like an observation deck where you look out, and I thought, why are they going to look out at the freeway? But it made me think that possibly, have you thought about a rooftop deck on that level? Because it, is it set back? Are the, is, is the observation level set back?
We actually have thought about that as green space for our employees and our guests and that sort of thing, and we're looking at what would be any structural limitations right in this general area. The second floor sort of spans, arcs the, along the front on the top of this red area here, and we're looking at an area right in here. There are some structural concerns about being able to support that, but we have looked at it. And so, I don't know, I don't know what our final outcome is going to be on that. As to your question about landscaping, we do actually have a number of new trees and a fair amount of shrubbery that's going to be planted in this general area here. And as Director Teague mentioned, we have a significant amount of planting along here and along the side around the edge of it. So we, I think we have enough, and I think we're adding a fair amount to complement what we have in place right now. Always happy to take a look and see what makes sense. Sometimes, planting a few more trees on there is a great team-building project for Arbor Day, so that may be a consideration as well.
Okay. Well, yeah, thank you very much, but yeah, if that, obviously, rooftop deck would be a wonderful addition, if it's, from an environmental standpoint as well, it just, it's a green initiative.
I want to be clear about, I know you were joking about this, but the observation space is really observation of patients and chronic care management, which is a hugely critical part of the ability for us to meet our, the needs in this community for those patients that need that. And that, we also then don't clog up the ED where we have critical patients.
One of the questions that got asked earlier, and I don't know whether it's Mr. Williams or Mr. Lubin or who, but do you have some data for us on the height difference between the on-ramp and the rotary? Because we, that came up before, this notion of headlights on the rotary as somebody's getting on the on-ramp. Do we have any-
I don't know if we have that handy, and I don't know if WSB looked at that as well. So I, we do not have that here.
Okay. So I think I'm hearing, reading between the lines, that's the one kind of safety concern with those two traffic uses so close to one another.
Yeah. So I think that if the, and I believe that's a legitimate concern, we do not want anything on our project to create any kind of a safety hazard. Much as we might like the business, we don't want to have a safety hazard here. But the reality is, we understand that. And so, to your, to Commissioner Carr's point, if, if we needed to do something along this line right here, that would also then add to our landscaping component, that might be a good solution. But we will certainly look at that.
It may be, it may be as well that Minda would be receptive to some kind of cooperative effort on screening there as well with something that-
Right. And as we were talking about it earlier, I was thinking that that might be a good way to take care of that. And I, I do think that we don't have the feedback back from the State Department, but I do think this information was given to them just to have those kinds of things, the kind of things looked at.
Okay. Other questions for the applicants? All right. Thank you, Mr. Gruman and your team.
Thank you very much.
So Chuck, I hate to have you sit here through all these meetings without getting to say anything. I think maybe you should come up and briefly tell us about the traffic and parking report.
Good evening. As far as the traffic goes, I'll talk about the traffic first, then I'll talk about the parking. The, the traffic component, I, I broke up into three pieces, the, the urgent care, the emergency room, and then what was left over, basically, for, as new, new space. So it, based on what their accounts are, you know, and, and they indicated that during those AM and PM peak hours that we're looking at for the traffic, they're, you know, they're not very, you know, there's not a lot of activity. There's like, I believe, three in the morning, you know, on average, and seven in the evening, you know, so. So there's not a lot of activity, you know, through the, through the emergency room at, at those times. So taking out those areas, as far as the emergency room, and then for the urgent care, they currently don't have urgent care in the morning. That, that AM peak hour's not covered, but as I understand, it's going to be added. So, you know, we, we took, what I did is I took what at the P, the PM peak, which was seven, you know, visits, you know, during that PM peak, and I put that in the AM. So as a worst-case condition, you know, kind of replicated that evening peak in the morning as a worst-case condition. And then I added 10% on top of it. You know, there, you know, as far as if they have a 10% increase in, you know, in service or, or something, so I increased that all 10%. And that's how I came up with the urgent care and the emergency room, you know, traffic generation, the additional traffic generation. And it wasn't much, you know, so it's 16, you know, trips in the morning and four trips in the evening is all it really added to, for those two components. What was left after you took out those square footages and the mechanical room square footages and so forth, was a little over 20,000 square feet of new space that then I used the hospital rate, you know, of, of how much that would generate. And that would generate another 20 trips in the morning and 20 trips in the evening. So I added those into it. So that's where I came up with my, you know, traffic generation. So we're, we're really with this expansion, only adding about 36 trips in the morning and 24 trips in the evening, is what we're really adding. So it's not a significant increase in traffic, you know, from the site.
But those are, those are all likely to go through that intersection of France and 65th?
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly. So, and what I found was in, you know, the short term, we don't have any real issues there, but when I looked at those 20, 30 conditions with all the background growth, with all the growth of the other areas around, you know, the, around this area, that's when we started to have some breakdowns at that intersection is, in those future conditions. Thus, the, the condition that's in, you know, that, that we're proposing again is, once those issues hit, you know, then they would be partially responsible for some of those improvements at that intersection. Any questions on the, the traffic generation part of it?
No.
Okay.
Doesn't look like it.
As far as the parking, again, you know, they had, they've done extensive parking surveys, and they, they gave us, you know, that, that information that they had, you know, the 1,400, you know, average, and then the 1,690, I believe, was the evening or the, the peak, you know, parking demand that they, they came up with on the site. So then, I, I looked at it in a, in a couple of different ways to kind of justify those numbers and to see if they're, how accurate they were. Looking at city code, you know, if we look at the city code, and city code's based on, for the hospital, number of beds and number of employees in the peak, you know, the peak shift, you know, is how it is, is generated. So, an 80,000 square foot addition really doesn't have, it's not adding any beds, you know, so what we assumed again is that 10%, you know, increase in employees. And that's where, you know, they, they were, you know, happy with my employee addition, so. But, so I assumed a 10% increase of employees to come up with that number that Kerry indicated in, in his, his presentation for that, that variance number, that top number of, I believe it was 27, 28, based on city code is what, what would be required, you know, on this site. Then I start, then I looked at what the, the demand would be based on ITE trip generation and ITE rates that are, are out there. And again, you know, looking at the hospital and the two medical office buildings that are on-site is how I came up with what would be required on the site. And it came out extremely close to what their peak, you know, peak number was. You know, I came up with 18, a little over 1,800 that would be required based on that, that ITE number. They're saying their, their peak number was 1,790. So, we're about 40, about 40 trips or 40 parking stalls different from what ITE is saying they should have and what they actually have counted. So, I felt very comfortable with what their numbers were. So, that's, that's why with the parking variance and what's out there today, I was very comfortable with the, the parking that they're proposing, or no additional parking is really needed.
Questions for Mr. Rickert. Thank you, Chuck.
Yep.
This is a public hearing, and so I'd like to, at this point, open the public hearing and invite anyone who is here and would like to comment on the proposal to come forward, state your name, address, and tell us what you're thinking. I think one of the two side microphones is probably best.
My name is Kevin Waterston, and I'm actually here from the funeral home at 7110 France. And I came here for buyer leads, and I stuck around for this. But on December 17th, I went in the hospital, in the emergency room there, and the doctors were vigilant in finding out what was wrong with me. Within an hour, they told me I had colon cancer, and they proved it was right. I've never been there, or have had a hard time parking. I left there at 5:30 this afternoon at, from chemotherapy treatment at the building across the way. I probably parked closer than I did parking here tonight. I've been in, in my business, being in the funeral business, I've been in probably more emergency rooms than maybe some of these guys ever have. But, and, and parking is never close. These hospitals have always doing expansions, they're always, you know, upgrading, and I don't think this is, the parking should be a problem at all with here. And one thing about the hospitals too, if they find it's a problem, they fix it. So, I'm all in favor of the whole thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for staying for this as well. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, Martin Kirsch, 67, 25 Penn Avenue South.
Welcome, Mr. Kirsch.
One of the trustees of Southdale Hospital, and I just want to encourage you to support this project. This is very, very valuable to Southdale, which is a quality hospital, not only in the state of Minnesota, but throughout the nation, and appreciate your support.
Thank you, Mr. Kirsch. Anyone else who'd like to comment at this time? All right, seeing no further comments, I ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. All right, so the public hearing is closed. Further discussion among the commission? Commissioner Carpenter.
I'm going to call this a veritable no-brainer. That's, I don't know.
What's the veritable part?
I'm sorry, a no-brainer. So, I'm going to leave it at that.
It's a no-brainer motion? No. Any other, any other comments? There's some bad... Commissioner Platter.
It can't be, but I don't, I think we're in the discussion phase.
I'm, I, only if we need discussion.
I would make a real motion to approve with this, in lieu of, or with the staff conditions that are, that are in order on the plan here.
Further discussion? I guess the one thing that I would just say is, I would encourage you between, between this stage and when you get to the city council to take a look at that buffer question between the freeway and the roundabout, I think from a safety perspective, it sounds like we didn't, there's some information we still don't have, and I think the council would probably benefit from that. And, and it sounds like MINDOT has had this plan in front of them, so maybe it's a telephone call where they can, there can be a conversation with their engineers before the council takes this up.
And I might just add, if I can, is it okay?
Sure, yeah, come on up.
As we think about this sort of thing, I mean, there are always these kinds of things that come up in the project, and so, if this is something, we may not even want to wait until we get the feedback, we could do something on landscaping there and take care of this problem. But, we will have the resolution clearly before we go to the city council.
Okay. Commissioner Forrest.
I'm also in favor of the project. I do encourage you to take the opportunity that this gives you too, to really look at the user's experience of an ER and urgent care situation as far as providing adequate temporary parking.
All right, seeing no further discussion, I call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. So, this recommendation goes to the, goes to the city council, and I'm sure Carrie will work with you to figure out exactly the date. Thank you for your time and energies this evening.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is reports and recommendations, zoning ordinance update. Carrie has been kind enough to present us with a memo dated May 8th, basically making some additional changes to our, right, so we had a, we had an April 24 memo in our packet, and then there was a subsequent email with a May 8th memorandum. They're actually both relevant, the April 24th one, it's, the May 8th is just kind of an update. And Carrie, I don't know if you want to just briefly give us an overview of what the May 8th memo does to the April 24 memo?
It really incorporates the suggestions that you made at the April 24th meeting?
Okay. Right, so it's an important, so, we're still on schedule to have a public hearing on this at our next meeting on June 12th. And I think that the, you know, the outline you have in your April 24th memo, it has a number of bullets, and, and what I was going to suggest is, we could even, we could even boil those bullets down to maybe seven points. There's drainage retaining walls and site access, which includes the egress window setbacks. There's the building lot coverage issue. There's the side yard setback, building height, including the second floor step-back issue. There's the sidewall articulation. The fifth one is the front-facing garage issue. The sixth is the non-conforming front yard setbacks, and then the seventh is the garage requirements. We had some discussion about one or two-car garage requirements. And what I, what I would propose is that when we bring this forward for the public hearing on the 12th, that we have a presentation, and Carrie, we can, you and I can work on putting something together, and perhaps with Commissioner Platter and Forrest and, and Potts, who've been so critical on this. But, a presentation that kind of gives the overview of where we've come from and what we've considered, what is kind of on the plate now, what things we decided to either defer or take off the plate, and then we can have a discussion. I think that's a good way to organize the discussion. There's really going to be one ordinance, I think, or one set of ordinances that we'll want to either recommend or not recommend to the council. But, I want to have a discussion on these, on these differing points, because I think that would be the most beneficial for the council to hear from us. We've had the beginnings of some debate on each of these points as we've moved along, and I, I want to make sure they get a chance to hear the things we've wrestled with on each of these points. So, I'm curious as to thoughts from the commissioners on that idea of, of how to approach the public hearing. Commissioner Platter.
I was just going to say, from, from that instance, I had, I had done a, a real, much briefer presentation to the Morningset Neighborhood Association the other day, but kind of a summary, summation of where we were, you know, the timeline, and then kind of what we had under consideration, what I didn't have on there is what we had talked through and maybe had not, but that could easily be done. I guess I'm, I'm wondering if that's something that I should take a swing at and then pass through you guys to, does that make sense as you're opening, I guess, piece of that? And then we would get into the, the language, if you will, because there's got to be a setup, right?
Right. I think there needs to be...
To what that is.
Right, for somebody who maybe hasn't...
And that's going to, there's going to be, there's always going to be that people or persons or many...
Who may be dropping into this for the first time.
Right, exactly, and, and there's a very good chance of that. So, how do we, you know, succinctly present that, the, the story up until this point?
Commissioner Shearer.
One of the notes I'd written to myself was that I really wanted to address the purpose and the setup for the public hearing, because there, there are some issues here that we didn't all agree on. We, we agreed to include them to see if we could get some additional input, but we can't present this, I don't think in all fairness to the public, saying, this is what we're recommending, all of us as a group, to the city council. We haven't really gone through that final step ourselves. We've progressed towards that point, we're stopping short of a final vote or a final discussion ourselves while we garner further public input.
And I, and I guess we don't necessarily have to have the final vote at that meeting on the 12th, we could take that input, give Carrie some direction, and then come back at our last meeting in June.
I recommend we do that, that we think about it and take that in as additional input to our own thinking and our own, to, you know, to inform our own vote later on.
I'm, I'm fine with that, that's part of why I wanted to bring up the process. But, but I also want to make sure, we may send an ordinance on for their consideration, but we may have, we may not all agree on every portion of it, I suspect we won't.
There could be a minority report, shall we say?
Right, and so I want to, and I want to, I want to come up with the best way of expressing that, of expressing the divergence of opinions on things, and it's really frankly hard to do by taking bits and pieces of the actual ordinance language. Instead, I'm thinking kind of Carrie's April 24 memo refashioned, in a sense, to give us seven or eight headings that we can then have debate and discussion on. Maybe it's at the second meeting in June that we have that discussion.
Would, would you vote on each of those then, correct?
That's what I would envision, is we, we would give...
Wherever they land.
Right, we'd give the council a sense of, you know, where those are, and some of, some of those items might then change the ordinance language, either eliminate it or reverse it or something to that effect. But, I would envision that some kind of an ordinance document would go forward to the council with then an outline of what our positions were on each of the points.
So, let's say two of those don't pass here, would those still go, go along to them for consideration?
Right, and we'd say we, you know, we're recommending...
Not doing that.
Yeah, and in some cases, that may change the language, in other cases, it may, you know, I, I think it's going to depend on the circumstances.
And the not doing could be because of our, our group's deliberations, because of the public's input, you know, because of, of input from builders, if we, you know, whatever.
Right, right.
What's kinds of things that came up for consideration, seemed like a good idea, but then it wasn't? Is that what you're?
Yeah.
Kind of, or, you know, that we, we heard these items, we, we took them out and we, we, you know, reviewed them and input and decided, well, that maybe wasn't a good idea, right? I mean, that's, that's what we're getting at on some of these too. I don't know if there are those or aren't, but...
And I think to Commissioner Shearer's point, if, you know, we may get some public input and say, you know what, we took that off the table, maybe we should put that back in, or something that, somehow we missed it, right? So, I'm hearing that we should take a two-step approach to it. We have our public hearing on the 12th, we get that input, and then we come back on whatever it is, the 20th, I had that here somewhere, the 26th? And that's when we can have this kind of framed up and have a final debate and discussion. But I would like to get it off our desk, if possible, by the end of June. That was what we had kind of told the council, we'd try and get them something by the end of June, and I, I think that's a good accomplishment.
So, in fairness then at the public hearing, to, to get to Commissioner Platter's question about how to tee it up, I mean, it seems to me we could say to all people that are present that this is our current thinking, we want your response to that.
Yeah.
We're still going to be meeting again to entertain, you know, changes or considerations to decide if this is what we're going to put before the council. So, please, respond to everything that's on this page, pro and con.
So, I would envision two things. One is kind of a procedural introduction, and I, I think Commissioner Platter would be, what he was describing is a good way to do that. And then I think a substantive introduction, rather than grinding through the language of the ordinance, take something like what Carrie produced on the 24th of April in an outline form and say, here's what this ordinance does, there's eight pieces to it, and here's what each piece does. And then people have got a good sense of that, then we take our public input and we come back at the next meeting to make some decisions.
You know, just, I know we're, part of this is we're, I guess, cleaning up some stuff, you know, rearranging stuff. Is that, is that a key piece of this? In other words, you know, to avoid clutter, does that have to be mentioned? Or that is, that is what it is? You know, and so people aren't, I don't know...
Well, for instance...
Discussing that, well, it should be in this section or this section, I'm just...
Yeah, I guess I'd like to avoid the kind of group, group drafting. Yeah.
Yeah, and that's what I was, you know, here's the real heart of it, or the heart of the matter, but...
Having said that, I think, for instance, we got some good input on the side yard setback formula that we did, that, you know, somebody wrote in and said, well, if you really work it all the way out, you know, it's not working the way it's supposed to. So, so we got to make sure, you know, I'm wide open to input on the actual language, and I think we should invite people to do that, but I want to give it a framework for people to understand.
Correct. The kind of the Cliff Notes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think you should give them access to our proposed wording to the ordinance, but the focus of the meeting really should be in the concepts. People want to look at that, that's great, but I think it's really general discussion, the concepts, and people that are interested will look at the specific wording, and we may get some good feedback on that too.
Right. Okay, well, I hear good consensus on this. Any other? Commissioner Crable.
Yeah, can we, can we kind of manage the schedule of the business that's coming before the commission, so we don't...
Good point.
End up talking about this at 11:30 at night or something like that?
Yes, so Carrie, what's our, you have any sense of the agenda?
We'll be in good shape for the 12th.
Good. So, we could do, I think it does make sense if we can at all do this first, because people, really, it's hard to have any wind left in your sails if it's bad late at night and you're trying to focus on this. Right. We've already put that out, right?
It goes out tomorrow.
Okay.
Tomorrow's the deadline for official notice.
So, what do we need to publish? Or do we need to publish, what do we, when, when do we need to publish this out there then? Is that when it's, the packet comes out?
Yeah, that would...
You know, because I, I think, I think we need to get it out there, right, for people to comment, and I don't know when that, obviously it doesn't go out when the public notice goes out of the hearing, but at what point does it?
Well, everything we've done up to date is out there. So, the, the April 24th and the May 8th memos are out there.
Yeah, that's true. But is there, I guess, is there another, this next summation, is that really the true?
Yeah, I think that's kind of the cover memo for the meeting on the 12th, and, and we'll want to make sure if there's people signed up on City Extra that they have, you know, that, that notice goes out to them when the packet's available.
Yeah.
So they can get online and...
So, that would be the Friday before the meeting.
Yeah. I think that's, you're, it's a good point, because then people have a chance to read that, see the overarching framework.
Right, you know, as much as we can, I mean, if people aren't following this, they can see how it kind of progresses, but what's the net-net that we're...
Right.
And that, we're not quite there, and the sooner we get that out, the better, people to react to.
Yeah, I'd like to see that they, we actually make, that we don't just say this would be nice, but that we actually will provide at least a City Extra, or if any press releases go out about the, the meeting for any other reason that this is mentioned, so that people who haven't been following it can still have the opportunity to catch up with it.
We can send out a City Extra this week.
Good.
Yeah, I mean, I would send out a couple of them, I mean, I'd, if you do a couple times even, you know, catch more.
Okay. All right, well, thank you all. We'll proceed accordingly. Correspondents' and petitions, the attendance sheet is in, I think the council meeting was just yesterday, right? So, we don't have a council connection for that. Chair and commission member comments, and I have nothing to add to the festivities. Anything else from anyone else? Carrie?
None for me.
I did see in Commissioner Sprague's summary of last night's meeting that they, that the council did officially decide they're going to do a community advisory committee for the Grand View, for the next phase of the Grand View project. They decided that at last night's meeting?
They did, and they're making some recommendations on who fills those positions.
Very good. Okay, so, hearing nothing further, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye, thank you, we are adjourned. Not bad.